Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 30th meeting of the Blackstone, Millville Regional School District School Committee. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order and ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this moment, before we introduce members, I would like to take a moment of silence in recognition of the long service of our former school attorney, Mr. Harold Gould. His services to Blackstone and Millville are invaluable, were invaluable, and his commitment to this district extended upwards of 40 years. So we send condolences to his family and thank him and them for allowing him to serve us as really a passion in his life. So we'll take a moment, please. I did, I never had the pleasure of serving on the committee while Mr. Gould was our attorney, but I do know that people really enjoyed their interaction with him. Quite the, quite the man. Okay, we'll do the introduction of members. I am Jane Reggio from Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Sorry, Tammy. Karen Vernon, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Yeah, Keith, Blackstone.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Erin Vernaco, Millville.
Matt Aaronworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Jill.
Jill Pila-Galliani, Director of Learner Support Services.
Hey, thank you and welcome, everyone. In your packets or actually in a separate mailing, you should have received the minutes of the June 25th meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll move.
Okay, moved by Jack. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tammy. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of June 25th, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so those minutes are approved. Next on our agenda is the School Committee Superintendent's Evaluation. I believe you received a copy of that from Wendy. I'm just going to go over it. We have to make the results public as one committee. We do have a decision to make towards the end, but the superintendent is evaluated on rubric set up by the Department of Ed. We use the new form this year, and his goals were set, and the scoring was did not meet some progress, significant progress, met, or exceeded. And we really focus on the overall rating for the different standards and the learning and professional goal, but I will go through the individual very quickly. On instructional leadership and curriculum, there was an overall score of 4.5, so right between the met and exceeded. And some of the comments were commitment to developing the skills of the administration team continues to flourish, administrator competence continues to grow, regularly scheduled meetings with administrators allow for assessment in this area. In addition, the addition of coaches allows for added support. The next area was instructional leadership instruction with an overall score of 4.2. Instructional leadership quality of effort and work was an overall score of 4.6. Leads by example and looks at multiple perspectives, listens to others. Instructional leadership meeting diverse needs was also 4.6. Instructional leadership student learners was a 3.6, but this is based on the fact that there is really no data, but it's, but somebody did feel that it was important for parents to see individual feedback on all the assessments. So the overall rating for standard one in instructional leadership, the consensus is that the superintendent met this standard. So does anybody have any comments on that? Okay, so standard number two, the first one is environment with an overall score of 4.5. The community hotlines that were developed and the willingness to respond to any issue at any time was positive. Effective plans, procedures, and routines are in place across the district that promote orderly and efficient student entry, dismissal, meals, class transition, assemblies, and recess. Jason also, without missing a beat upon the first week of school closure, created an effective plan to reach students in all neighborhoods with meals, Chromebooks, and hotspots. Noting this here as we didn't have a place for emergency efforts as a part of his evaluation, but he should be commended for the efforts, plans, and actions he took swiftly at the height of the pandemic. Operational systems, an overall score of 4.2. This district truly has a one-team approach. Many upgrades have been processed under Jason's direction. In social emotional well-being, an overall score of four. Believe budget constraints hamper development in this area. The idea of a district social worker and a nurse leader, among other ideas, need to be supported in the future. How can one show beyond the program? Our schools building relationship with students and families to see social emotional competencies in students. The next area was student health and safety with an overall score of 4.1. While education of our students is number one, their health and safety is a close second. This was never more evident in the family-student support during COVID remote process. The overall rating for standard two, management and operations, the consensus is that the superintendent met this standard with an overall score of 4.1. Does anybody have any comments about management and operations? Okay. Standard three, the first one is supports all personnel to use culturally responsive and collaborative practices, the overall score of 4.5. Comments included his hotline emails, video connections, and a general reaching out to all members of our district is really a part of what makes his leadership work. When the COVID crisis hit, Jason and his team worked quickly to ensure that all students had access to technology, including Wi-Fi. Family engagement, an overall score of 4.5. Jason and his team have arranged for informative meetings, et cetera, to promote relationships and understanding of district plans. He has also fostered many relationships with outside agencies to increase opportunities for students, maximized his community outreach through other avenues. He also brought us through uncharted waters to budget approval at town meetings held during unprecedented times. Family concerns, an overall score of 4.0. The outreach for information when situations arise should be expanded prior to decisions being made. Differing views must be heard, and a compromise should be made when possible. Modeling or reteaching opportunities should be used as an initial resolution. Jason's approach to addressing family concerns may not be popular. However, I believe the issues he has resolved in our district are previous issues that may have been swept under the carpet or had heads turned the other way to avoid them. Some are not a fan of that, but he handled them head-on with integrity, confidentiality, and fairness, always in the best interest of students. The overall rating for standard three, family and community engagement, the consensus is that the superintendent met this standard with an overall score of 4.2. And a final comment there that he does a great job with community outreach and engagement. Does anybody have any additional comments?
I do.
Tammy, go ahead.
I just want to say in this area, I mean, it does have the four components, and you know, Jason has given parents his email, his personal cellphone number. You know, I think in this world where there are many means of communication, I would say there are not many superintendents out there nationwide perhaps that would go that step to try to provide the security to families to say, I'm here for you, here's my cell number, right? And so I think in that area, especially during this time where parents are feeling uncertainty about a lot of different things for very good reason, Jason's response is always have them call me, have them email me, have them reach out to me. And I think there's hesitation on, on the other side of things where parents, teachers, staff, community folks are like, do we really call the superintendent directly? I think there's more hesitation on that side of the table than there is on Jason's side to answer the phone. And so I commend Jason for that because I think for me, I certainly try to know my boundaries of when I should be trying to reach out to get that question that's on the top of my head answered, but I always know that I can send it, and I almost always get an answer quickly, which then, you know, his family probably isn't as happy with that part of it as we are. So I just, that was a little long-winded, but I think it's, I really appreciate as a school committee member knowing that I can really say to people, call Jason, tell him your concerns. I will tell him too, but let him ask you the questions he needs to ask you, and I know he's going to answer the phone, and I think that goes a long way in this area.
Anyone else? Okay, the next standard starts with commitment to high standards, an overall score of 4.6, has high expectations for all educators, staff, and students, as well as himself. On mission and core values, also an overall score of 4.6, lives the blueprint every day and expects all others to focus their efforts there as well. Meetings, overall score of 4.3. Communication, overall score of 4.6. Information shared from Jason with his weekly communication to the administrative team. The recordings and emails are some examples of how he is always reaching to make sure his communication is effective. Continues to use a variety of methods to communicate with stakeholders, so many examples, so little time. Monthly Facebook Lives, he nailed it. Overall rating for standard four and professional culture is where we do not have a consensus. We are 50/50 with met and exceeded this standard. So we have to make a decision as a group, but the comment under that overall, so Jason's professional goal, oh, I'm sorry, that's a different thing. So professional culture. Half of us believe he met the goal, half of us believe he exceeded the goal. And so it included four, four areas, commitment to high standards, mission and core value, which both of those would have been exceeded, and meetings and communication indicator, which also was exceeded, and meetings which would have been met.
So Jane, do you want me to just go over the definition of the overall rating?
Sure.
Okay, so the educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by nurturing and sustaining a district-wide culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. And under that, the indicators fall as it be, but that is the, that is the umbrella underneath for standard four.
Standard four.
Yeah.
Anybody have comments, preference? So I don't, I personally don't think anybody holds themselves up to higher standards than Jason holds himself, and I think the reflection of his team in the survey that they did that he was willing to share with us really reflected really all of these areas. And so in my opinion, he has, has far exceeded my expectation when those goals were presented to us.
I was just, so looking at all of the indicators under, under that, it looks like the only one that
was met.
Maybe I'm reading this wrong. That shows as met is the communications. Is that?
Is meeting, meetings. Meetings.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is that something that we should talk about to see where people fell with that? Because it looks like the rest of them, he had exceeded, right? And it's not that we want to sway the other one way or another, but I guess we need to figure out where we can come in on meetings?
Well, let's, let's review the definition of the indicator 4A3, and then maybe we can look at it from that, that perspective. Communication demonstrates strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills.
I don't think it's, read, read the one that says meetings.
Meeting, I don't see it.
Right under mission and core values, the next one down.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at the rubric itself online on the DESSY website. Jane, you'll have to keep going because now I've lost it.
Okay, okay.
It's 4A3, right? Is that, is that the right one?
Oh, okay. I gotta go further down.
Anyone have any other? Somebody who felt that was a met have any comments? While you're thinking, I'll continue with the others. Jason's professional goal has been met with an overall of score four point, overall score of 4.2. His student learning goal could not be evaluated given the lack of data as a result of the pandemic, and we had agreed upon that at a previous meeting that we would not rate that one.
Jane, I can jump in. I have it now. I have, okay. Regularly plans and leads well-run and engaging in administrator meetings that have a clear purpose, focus on matters of consequence, and engage participants in a thoughtful and productive series of conversations and deliberations about important district matters. Establishes clear norms for administrator team behavior that promote a supportive team culture. And I think for the people at home, we're having a conversation of met or exceeded. So we're not having any conversations that are lower than met. So right now, our conversation is gathered around met or exceeded. So the standard, we have set the standard high, and I think we hold him high to those standards. And so this discussion is, we know that he's met, but has it gone above meeting? So I just want to make sure people understand we're not debating whether he's met it or not, because he's definitely met it. It's the meet or exceeded.
So, and just to clarify, and Jason, if you would like to let us confirm or not confirm, this evidence that you gave us was more than, but it was, it was your Sunday emails to your team. You gave us printed out copies. You showed us your calendar, which showed your weekly events, but also where you have your admin team meetings regularly scheduled. And I believe there was also an example given where you not only sent them emails, but you sent it as a voice recording option so they could actually listen while they are, so they could multitask. Is that, am I thinking of the right evidence for this particular goal?
Yeah, we do.
For me, the podcast stands out where you're giving, you're going, you're more than meeting, you're exceeding that option for the, for the, but maybe, maybe there's some confusion with the communication piece versus meeting piece, because to me, that, that still brings your whole administration team together. I don't know if I'm thinking of that.
I think, Wendy, can you, I think that based on the comment that's under there, and one of the comments that is on there is my comment. I think that this standard has sort of two pieces, the family and the administration. Is that, is that the one I'm thinking of?
No, um, kind of.
I thought when Wendy just, when Wendy just read what she read, it had a family component.
Family, family is really in standard three, family and community engagement. This one is more professional culture, like holding everybody to high standards, like ensuring that, you know, there's a commitment to the high standards, the mission and core values are in front of everybody, that he needs to remind people of that, that he communicates well, that those things are important. Those are the four pieces that we took out of, that we, that, that we agreed should be his focus this year in that high standards.
Yeah, there was no, there wasn't a family, there was nothing in family, the family part of that.
Can you just read the, the second to last sentence that you just read, or it was close to the end?
Yeah, there's only, I'll read it over again, just so, just for a clear understanding. Regularly plans and leads well-run and engaging administrator meetings that have clear purpose, focus on matters of consequence, and engage participants in a thoughtful and productive series of conversations and deliberations about important district matters. Establishes clear norms for administrator team behavior that promote a supportive team culture.
And, and in my opinion, you know, designing that whole blueprint and shifting the way we look at the goals hits exactly to that.
So I, I may be a person that said met in this, but I, I'm trying to find the document that we originally, we looked at like three documents at the same time as doing this.
Yeah.
And so there was a piece of it based on my comment on this section about, you know, kind of getting this stakeholders' information and thoughts. I was reading that differently to be beyond the administrative team. So if this is just the administrative team and getting their say, I mean, I do think that the rubrics, the grading that the administrators did also had some, not lower, but I forget what the, the ratings there were, but there were some where maybe it sounded like maybe their opinions weren't always part of the final decisions or something. And again, I'm not looking at it in front of me with all those little pieces, but if it's just focused on communication with the administration, then I would support the exceed.
And I see this as two different, two different things, maybe a little different than Tammy, but I see this as the structures are in place and then the conversation. So I see it as two different like pieces, you know, and I definitely think that all the structures are in place. I think the norms are set, the behaviors are set. I think there's a supportive team culture. And then again, reviewing the same thing that Tammy shared, then you have that, that conversation piece and the deliberation piece. Again, we're talking met versus exceeded, so I would do, I would do either or, but I think, I think I see it as, I saw it as two different, and I think that they were very structured and there was many meetings with a purpose, and I think it was bringing our district to another level. It's the, the conversation and delivery deliberation was that second piece. Again, meet versus exceeded.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we have to, we have to make a decision.
I would also support, I would also support changing it to exceeded based on rereading it.
Okay.
There's definitely a lot of evidence.
So are people, is there anybody, I don't know how to do this, uncomfortable with exceeded? Okay.
No.
So we will indicate that in for, uh, sorry, let me.
Standard four.
Overall rating for standard four, professional culture consensus is that the superintendent exceeded this standard. Does anybody have any comments that they would like to make that might help Jason move forward into the next year, or focus areas they'd like him to focus on?
I don't know that Jason is going to have a choice of what he has to focus on going into this next school year. I'm sorry to say.
The number one goal is we would like you to survive.
Starts with a C and ends with a D.
Focus on vaccine research for the next year.
We, our goal for you is that you survive and, and you don't take Matt and Jill down with you. Ryan, just stay above water.
We're going to get through this, but our focus is still the work.
There you go.
Jason will be the first one to tell you that.
Good response, Matt.
Good response. Anyone else?
Thank you for all that you're doing, Jason.
Yeah, the same, that was just going to be my exact comment. Thank you for the service you give to this district. We are far better for it.
You have a copy of that, right? You have a copy of the evaluation?
Yes, yeah, I do. Thank you. And I had a chance to review it and very much absorb all the feedback and have already started thinking about what are some ways that I can work, you know, kind of those three questions, what do we keep doing, stop doing, and start doing? So I'm already kind of processing through that, those three lenses with, with the comments in, in each area. So I really appreciate the feedback very much.
Anyone else? Okay, I will turn it over to Dr. DeFalco.
Great.
A moment we've all been waiting for.
So this evening, we are going to spend what I, what I'm assuming is going to be a, you know, a significant amount of time talking about our preliminary plans for school reopening. And to all of our family and staff and friends and everybody at home that is tuning in, I really want to underscore a couple of things with this discussion this evening. I think the first part is it is meant to be just that. It is a discussion. You know, we are in a really interesting situation. First, first time our generation has faced anything like this, although other pandemics have certainly occurred before this, but it's new to us. And so we're learning as much as we can and staying on top of all the research. We are trying to learn best practice. And, you know, when we, when we had to move into this situation in the spring around mid-March, we had to do so very quickly without a lot of notice. And, you know, certainly very much want to say thank you to the staff for, you know, pivoting, is a new term that people, or term people using a lot lately. I shouldn't say it's a new term, but for making that shift in the way we deliver our instruction and supporting our students and families. But with that, we know that we can do things different, and we know that, again, there are things, there are practices we should continue with, practices that we may want to abandon, and new practices that we should start as we venture into this next phase of, of teaching and learning during this pandemic. And so this evening, we're going to, I'm going to actually share my screen, but we are going to spend a good chunk of time talking a bit about what our initial thinking is. And so that's the second part that I really want to underscore. These plans for this evening are preliminary. And essentially, at this stage, and I'll review the timeline in a moment, you know, we are just processing out what our initial thinking and ideas are around how to get our schools reopen in the fall as safely as possible. And so with that, I would like to start by just reminding our school community about our guideposts. And these are the actual tenants of our work. And I'm glad Matt said what he did regarding our focus as we move forward through the pandemic and this next phase of teaching and learning, because the work isn't stopping. And, you know, I spent some time at our last meeting when I was going over my evaluation evidence and reflection documents, talking a bit about how, you know, when March, you know, mid-March kind of struck, the question didn't just become how do we do remote learning? The question became how do we continue to meet the purpose that we've set out in our school district in that trying to develop those happy, healthy, proficient students ready for college, career, and community? And we got some things, I think, right, and we got some things wrong, and I think we got some stuff in between. And so what we're looking to do as we move into this next phase is to continue to use our purpose as the driver, to use our district strategy, staying focused on the what, the how, the whole child and the community. One of the things the school committee had a chance to see as far as evidence was the work we are still doing with our literacy curriculum. We're adopting a new curriculum. Pandemic's not stopping that. Kids have to read, and that is our work. And so we are staying very much anchored and focused in driving forward our improvement work with our instructional practice, with our curriculum, addressing the needs of the whole child, and still trying to partner very closely with our community through all of this. Frankly, this next phase of work is not something the school system can do alone. And we're going to talk a bit about our community involvement and community And we're going to talk a bit about our community involvement and community partnerships as we walk through the reopening plans. And then specifically, when we started, you know, the leadership team, when we started thinking about how do we do this work? What, you know, how do we do this remotely? How do we meet with teachers? How do we support kids? How do we connect with families? How do we feed families and children? And how do we do all of this? You know, before we got to a lot of the answers to those questions, we started by developing these principles, these three guiding principles. And I know, I won't read them to folks. I know that we've seen them at nauseam and they're, you know, they've been in emails and school committee meetings and, but I just want to put them out again, because these three main areas, these guideposts are still guiding us through this decision-making process and through the work. With that, we have two goals. We have two main goals for reopening our schools. The first goal is really anchored in this idea of physical, behavioral, intellectual health. And that really goes back to looking at our whole, the whole child. Yes, we're an academic institution. We're about teaching and learning. And we embrace that, but we also know that there are other components to our students and our staff for that matter, that are really important. And so these areas are very much shaping the way we think about reopening our schools and the intentional decision-making that goes into that and how we move forward with that. The second goal, speaking both as an educator and also as a dad, this is a really important one. And that's, we need to get our kids back into our classrooms as safely as possible. And I want to underscore focusing on everyone's safety, all of us. And so, you know, we'll speak a little bit this evening about how we do that. And how we take a very slow kind of approach, a very intentional approach to reopening schools. I want to say again upfront, these are just preliminary thoughts and ideas right now. And there's still quite a bit of work to do that we'll talk about at the end of our discussion that, that needs to happen in order to execute on this work. And shift certain areas if possible, if we need to. So for our families watching at home, I would like to make sure that, and I'll say this again at the end, that, that our, that our families know that we're going to have a Facebook Live on Monday at 5:00 PM. And I'll be sending out this presentation and this particular part of the video of our school committee meeting tomorrow with a survey. So parents, please know that we are reaching out to you for feedback, for input and to our staff. We have a really strong staff in BMR and I had, I had the pleasure of meeting with about a hundred of them today on Zoom, talking about some of these things. We have another meeting on Monday. And a survey also will be going out to staff with the same presentation and the video link to get staff feedback. So when I say this is a community effort, it's a community effort. This is, this is going to be a Herculean effort that's going to require everybody's positivity, everybody's productive kind of energy and effort to get this work off the ground. But again, we need to keep in mind focusing on the physical, intellectual and behavioral health while getting as many students safely back into the classroom as we can. So before we launch into some of the specifics of the plans, I just want to share some data. I thought this would be really important for everybody to see. This data comes directly from both boards of health. We speak with them on a routine basis. As a matter of fact, Mr. Erwinworth had a call with them today. And since March in Blackstone, this was as of July 18th, we've had 59 COVID-19 cases out of a total population of nine, last census, 9,326. So it's about a 0.6% infection rate. For Millville, we've had a total of 30 COVID cases since March. And again, that's of July 18th. That is a 0.9% infection rate. So collectively, we're hovering as a, as a regional system, we're hovering around 0.8% as far as the infection rate goes. I put this out there because like I'm assuming many of us, many of you watching on school committee, I'm a news junkie and I'm constantly reading a variety of, of news sources like, like many. And they tend to focus on the hotspots. So you hear about Texas and Arizona and Florida and, and in the spring it was in the Northeast, New York City, et cetera. And so I do think local context matters. I think it's important. So I wanted to make sure to be able to put that data out for folks who maybe haven't had a chance to see. You know, this work hasn't just begun in the past couple of weeks. We've had a really, quite the journey so far to our reopening planning. And you can see, I, I weren't certainly read through all these items to everybody at home. But we have a significant number of staff, school committee, family members involved in our return and recovery teams. We started this work in May, believe it or not, before last school year had even ended. And started talking about what are the things that we need to be thinking about? What are the considerations we need to make? What are the different ideas we have around getting students safely back into school? How do we support our students, our families and our teachers better that are trying to do this work? We then organized a much larger group into four subgroups. And there's a couple of kind of off sheets, if you will, of that particular subgroup listed here. And those groups have been working really hard to put together plans for teaching and learning. And I don't mean the structure of what does a hybrid look like? What does remote look like? But they've been really focused on what's the work that's happening inside of that structure? So we took to our families, we took your feedback and we sent it to the working groups and we pulled it apart. We found patterns and trends and said, how do we use this to inform what we do next? And we saw some, some really important themes surface, like we need to do better with our feedback. We need to give parents more feedback on how students are learning. Where are their gaps? We talked a bit about assessment. You know, when the kids return, how do we actually assess where they are? We've got a summer, a summer remote learning program going for almost a hundred students across the system. How do we work to help mitigate the learning loss for those kids? And how do we then take those pre-represent skills, concepts, standards that they need to know before launching into the next school year and make sure that they've got that information, right? So they're ready to launch. So I just want to give a big shout out to our teaching and learning team, to all of our teams, but we really took this feedback to try to unpack it and, and make some very clear determinations on whatever structure, whatever learning models in place, what's the work that needs to happen within that existing model? And then you can see just a variety of meetings from our leadership team that I am very lucky to be at the, at the helm of. We have, we have an incredibly strong district leadership team across our system, principals, assistant principals, we have coaches on the team, technology folks. And so we're really, really happy and pleased with that. They've added a tremendous amount to the work. Many calls of the commissioner of education. As you can imagine, there's new information coming out. In some, in some cases, it feels like almost daily, trying to keep up with all the guidance. It's quite a bit, but very important. Meetings with our teachers union and really sitting down at the table and saying, how do we make this work? How do we, how do we try to reopen schools and keep everybody healthy and care for, you know, for our children and our staff in the best way we can, our boards of health? And I will say, I think one of the things that has been really, it's interesting. We had a meeting with teachers today. One of the teachers commented on some of these slides looking like slides she had seen in another system. And I kind of smiled, but I said, yeah, you know, thinking as I'm looking at the feedback, we're all working together. We're one region, right? So Blackstone Valley, other than Milford, you've got a, you've got a, you've got quite a few small systems all hovering around that 1,500, give or take. And sure, you, you can bet we're going to be sharing resources and documents and ideas and plans. We're all in the same zone. We're all working together and we're trying really hard to our families who are worried because they live in Blackstone, but they might teach in a, in a surrounding community. What I can tell you is that our plans probably won't be perfectly aligned because again, context does matter and each community is slightly different, but we sure are trying where we can to, to make some alignment there. And then keeping up with research has been critical. So the department has required us to come up with these three plans. And I know that isn't news to anybody. You've got to have an in-person, a full in-person learning model option to submit to the department. You've got to have a hybrid option to submit and then finally remote learning. I think one of the things that is somewhat unique about our approach in BMR, and we are truly a district of one, trying to move forward, keeping our blueprint and our students at the core of our work. But we're adapting and we know that depending upon the age and stage of our students, the needs might be different. So what we will share this evening is not one plan for every kid, for every student. Because every student has different needs, right? So, you know, we, we see the importance of adapting that work as we move forward as a true district of one with that goal of bringing kids back safely and staff back safely. And then the last piece of data to share, and I'm sure some of the parents are probably thinking, come on, Jason, get to the plan, please. But I just want to share with everybody. You know, the results from our survey in the spring. So when we talked about those models, right, we kind of, we talked about these three plans and we asked families, you know, if we had a hybrid and at the time we were thinking if it was a week on, week off, you know, where would you fall on that? What, where would your interest be? So we had 550 unique surveys and here are the results. You can see that at the high school, 77% of families said they would opt for a hybrid model. Now we're interpreting that as some in-person, right? We didn't, we didn't list a full in-person as an option there. Our sense was if they would opt for a hybrid, they'd probably opt for a in-person. But please know that we'll be resurveying everybody tomorrow. And then of course, you can see to the right, that last column, our remote model. And what, what do the percents look like in terms of that level of comfort for folks who might want to keep their children at home in a remote model? One thing I want to underscore with this, remote model is not homeschooling. So families, if you're tuning in tonight and you're thinking, you know, I'm just going to homeschool my kid, that's not remote. That's actually something really different that you've got to apply for. Fill out an application, review your curriculum, your schedule and send everything in for me to review for approval. So I just want to make sure that people at home understand the difference between remote and, and homeschooling, because there is a significant difference in those two models. And we'll talk about specifically the remote model in a few minutes. We then surveyed staff and said, you know, what, to what degree are you comfortable with these, these three options? And here's how the staff felt. Now this was in June. And so, you know, we're going to resurvey the faculty and we're going to be asking some different questions in this particular survey than we did the first time, but still very, very important to get a sense where the staff are currently. But you can see in June, out of, out of about 300 staff members, we had 195 taken. So it was about a 50%, over 50%, excuse me, about two thirds of a sample size. And you can see that at the time, 88% of our staff in June were comfortable with some type of in-person, right? Whether it's a hybrid or small, you know, in-person, small groups, that kind of thing. And, you know, again, we'll be resurveying the faculty again, just like the parents to get a sense. To everyone at home that's listening, I think this part's really important. These surveys were anonymous that we did in June. The surveys that we're going to be sending to families and staff tomorrow cannot be anonymous because we need this specific information on staff and students so that we actually can start the planning work. And so you'll, you'll have a better sense of, of why that's so important when you open the survey, but families, we're going to ask very specific questions and feedback on our plans. If you adopt your child into a particular model, do you need transportation? And so they can't be anonymous. We have to collect all of that feedback. And I will say, if there are parents, our families or staff who are not comfortable taking the survey, we're going to have to reach out to you personally because we need, we need to know so that we can help support you and we can help support our planning and moving the district forward. So I just wanted to put that, that piece out to everybody. So another round of surveys will be coming tomorrow and there will be a very hard stop to the surveys. That will be Wednesday, August 5th. That is because on Thursday, August 6th, we will be bringing recommendations forward to, I will be bringing recommendations forward to the school committee, final recommendations. And I want to make sure that I have your voice captured in those recommendations and your feedback. So I cannot underscore the importance of the survey piece of this. So now to some preliminary thinking around our plans. So our in-person, this is just a, you know, 30,000 foot view up. Please know that we are working on a final reopening document that will, that will be released at some point next week or early the following week. We have to submit these preliminary plans to the Department of Education tomorrow. And then our final proposals to the Department of Education on August 10th. And so we will be releasing our final reopening plans right around that time. And what I will tell you is that in addition to the plans, we will have the, the research, the documentation, all the information that has been collected that are helping us drive the development of, of what we will put forward as a final plan for a school committee to review and make a decision on. And so with our in-person, again, at a 30,000 foot view up, so to speak, you can see that we need to consider alternative spaces. We have to reduce class size. Keeping in mind the six-foot distancing, I think that's important. Mr. Erwinworth will talk about in a few minutes this notion of three feet of social distancing versus six feet, and he'll get into all the specifics there. But keeping in mind the six feet distancing and what does that look like to our actual facility spaces, desks? How many kids can safely be in a classroom with a six-foot distancing? Looking at reducing the idea of mixing student groups right at the secondary level, six through 12, that happens a lot. And so we have to look at minimizing that, particularly at the high school and working to limit transitions, you know, in and out of multiple classrooms. And lastly, how do we construct building cohorts of kids? So groups of kids that don't interface with, with lots of other students? I will tell you in this space, the in-person space and in the hybrid space, we are also looking at alternative learning spaces like being outside. And Mr. Erwinworth can speak to it later, but we are actually going to be securing some tents so we can hold some outdoor classrooms. Kids and teachers can eat outside for lunch. And again, just to give that open, fresh air and, and clean space for everybody. As safety is obviously our top priority. So this is just kind of a high view of what our in-person, full in-person learning would look like. And so here's our preliminary thinking as we kind of start to work through in-person into remote. We are, we are proposing in our preliminary thinking. And there's a lot of detail to work out. But that all kindergarten through third graders and our special populations, which I'll have Ms. Pillow Dalarani speak to in a moment, return full-time to our schools in the fall. That's a full five days a week. And the challenge here is staffing in space. And so again, going with this notion of keeping children six feet apart, our youngest children six feet apart, we know that we can't do that in one classroom and have a whole class there, right? There's just, there's too many students. You can't socially distance them correctly. And so we looked at the latest research and really have determined, based on a study that was done in South Korea of about 6,500 students, that children under 10 are not showing to spread the virus as those that are 10 and older. What the research in that particular study has shown is that children 10 and older spread the virus like an adult could spread. And so for us, we are looking at a K to three continuum, which is our five to eight-year-olds to be back in our buildings full-time because they are not, according to our latest research, spreading the virus as older students are. So you'll see a different model for our fourth graders and others. But in this particular model, we are also looking at really needing to close any literacy gap that has been developed in our students since the beginning of this pandemic. For our families listening at home with our, with our youngest learners, you, you probably know just how real the struggle is, particularly when it comes to literacy. It is very hard to teach a child how to read through Zoom or through a Google Hangout. The level of, you know, we call it phonics and phonemic awareness, but sounding out letters and, 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 you know, putting letters together into blends and, and then those, those, those chunks of letters that blends into words and words into sentences, et cetera. It's not impossible, but it certainly is very challenging to do. It's not impossible, but it certainly is very challenging to do in this capacity. And so we have made a decision, preliminarily speaking, that K-3, we would like to be able to return all of those students. Again, we have the research behind it, and then we have the actual instructional data behind it to need to be able to do that. And that's not going to come without exercising some significant flexibility. And I do want to, I want to preface this next piece with the notion that this, this portion of our plan, we know, you know, may be challenging for some and worrisome for some, and I get that. But to be very frank, we do not have the space at the complex to make sure that every K through third grade teacher has two classroom spaces adjoining in order to spread the students out. The room that we have at the elementary level, as I'm sure it will come no surprise to folks, it's at Millville. And, you know, Millville was built for 600 students, there's about 200 students there, a little over that when you count our pre-K. That's district-wide, by the way. And so what we are preliminarily proposing, and I'll share in a moment with parents how we're looking to collect your feedback on this, is that we move all kindergarten in first grade to Millville Elementary for next year, and we move all second, third, fourth, and fifth grade to the JFK AFM Complex for next year. There is a provision in our regional agreement that allows, you know, to be able to do that if we need to. And frankly, on the survey we'll be sending to parents, they are school-specific for each child, so you will need to fill one out for each of your children. But for our elementary families, we ask you just kind of straight out that question. Would you support the reorganization of our elementary schools for this upcoming school year in order to get our K-3 students back full-time in full-time instruction? And so that piece of information is really important to us when we think about how do we proceed from here? So that's one piece. The other part of the equation is the staffing. So through essentially our CARES Act money, through a grant to the Department of Education, we are allowed to and need to spend this particular grant, which is about $380,000 on startup, startup costs. We have to use it to support getting our students back in school. And so what we are looking to do is provide an assistant, long-term sub, partner teacher, we're calling it many different things, but essentially a second person to partner with all of our, our teachers in grades one, two, and three, to be the second teacher in that other classroom to help supervise the students, to help keep them on task while the teacher's working with the other group of students and vice versa. The other thing I think that's really important about that particular model is we cannot have a, a sub-list of adults that are moving between multiple districts. We can't have that. You know, as it stands before the pandemic, you know, we would have a day-to-day sub-list to people that would work in Bellingham, Oxbridge, Northbridge, and BMR, right? And you would kind of go down the list if we had a teacher out. We can't do that. That's a safety issue. And so what we're looking to also do is to make sure that we have all hands on deck in order to support our, our, our children and our staff as we move through at least the first 60 to 90 days. And you'll notice, you see the first 60 to 90 days, and you're going to see it in some other places. That is because if you remember our kind of first couple of slides, we talked about this idea of going slow. So we want to move slow, we want to check our benchmarks, we want to make sure that everybody's staying healthy. And so we're not looking at this as a 180-day fix. We're looking at this as a moment or a segment in time. I'm going to pause here and ask Ms. PG if she can speak a bit more about our special populations work.
Jason, before you do that, and I know that a question came in, and we don't usually interrupt for questions, so we allow people to comment in public forum, but this one seems relevant because it's something you've said, and it was, "Are these preliminary plans due to the Department of Ed tomorrow? If so, is there time to make any changes?" So the preliminary plan, correct me if I'm wrong, is due tomorrow.
Yes.
And it's just an overarching concept plan.
Yep.
It's not, you know, the specifics can be changed when the actual plan goes in August 10th, so.
That's right.
Make that clear. I think I have that.
Yeah, and thanks for clarifying that. And I, and I want, I don't want anyone to hit the panic button and think that what we're submitting tomorrow, we have to do. We don't. So I don't want people panicked over this, but it is, this is our starting point, right? So there will be many, 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 many conversations between now and August 10th, and we have to submit our final plan. And I will say, we are in the same situation that every other system is in the, in the state. We're operating on the same timelines. Some districts, a couple of districts, got ahead of it and they submitted some plans before they were supposed to. Many of those plans have since changed or been revised. We are staying right on the timeline that our commissioner has asked us to. So if folks are wondering about that, just to give them a sense of the timeline. Jill?
Sure. So I'm sure that most of you know, the Department of Ed did put out guidance on our Fall 2020 reopening and including consideration for special education students. So, you know, they did continue to enforce that school districts must continue to provide a free, appropriate public education consistent with the need to protect the health and safety of not only our students, but, you know, the teachers that work with them. And the guidance notes that students with disabilities, and particularly our preschool-age students and those with significant and complex needs should be prioritized for receiving in-person instruction as much as feasible. So even in a hybrid model, if that's in place, every effort is to be made to continue to provide up to full-time in-person instruction to the identified students. So if, and if for any reason, full-time is not possible, again, we don't know, things will continue to change, school districts are still encouraged to provide as many services as possible. So our goal as a district, if we are in a hybrid model, is to maximize in-person learning for our youngest students, which would be our preschool students with disabilities, and our students with significant, complex disabilities, which means identified students will be provided with increased opportunities for in-school learning. And our goal is to have these students participate in each day an in-person learning takes place, because we know that remote learning is very challenging for these students. In addition to our special ed students, the guidance is also asking schools to make sure that our English language learners, those with significant needs, our Level Ones, Twos, our students who are, haven't received a lot of instruction in schooling or had interrupted schooling before coming here, will also be prioritized to maximize that in-person learning, because again, that language development, you know, needs to continue. So that is our goal as a district, to make sure that we're having, no matter what model we have, any in-person days, we're able to maximize those in-person for our special population students.
Thanks, Ms. PG. So just in summary, K-3, we are looking to be a full-in-person model. Separate classrooms, so about 10 kids in each room, depending upon the, you know, the number of families that opt for in-person, with a, with their, obviously their classroom teacher, and a full-time, you know, partner teacher, long-term sub-type position to just assist the teacher and help the student stay on task for at least the first 60 to 90 days. But again, we need to look at the actual spacing of that. And so families, that question will be going out to you in the survey. So we look forward to hearing your feedback on that, and hopefully Monday evening, you can join the Facebook Live. So this moves us to our grades four through 12. And so grades four through 12, we're doing something, I think fairly unique in terms of our hybrid model. So that is what we are preliminarily proposing. And as it stands, the first kind of thinking around how our hybrid model might work, we may even be shifting from this. So I'll share specifics of what I mean in a moment. But the way we are thinking about a hybrid model would be, we would have some in-person learning and then some remote learning, right? So it's basically, we would split the students into two different groups in each building, grades four through 12, and we would do some in-person and some remote. What we will do as far as splitting the students is manage it by alphabet to make sure we keep families together. And so families, when you take the survey, it'll be really important, again, to let us know your children's name or names, and so that we're able to, you know, keep groups of families together so that your in-person learning is on the same day and your remote learning is on the same day. However, one of the things that we are going to be able to offer through a very strong partnership with our Boys and Girls Club in Blackstone, and I could not be more thankful to the leadership of the Boys and Girls Club and to their board, is that on days when our children in grades four through eight are remote, so that means that they would be at home learning, they will have an opportunity to attend the Boys and Girls Club for the school day. Parents, so that you can go to work, to be frank, and that your children can get additional tutoring and support from our staff during the day, so that we can have as, as close to a seamless week of instruction as we can get in a hybrid model. And what we will do, because students are in groups, right? So in one particular hybrid model that we're sharing here, there's this concept of two days of instruction, a day of, you know, remote learning for everybody, and then two days of instruction for the other group, the second group. And I'll kind of explain that in a minute. I think we're moving away from that model, but that was the one we initially spoke about. So the idea would be that on those remote days, parents would be able to sign up, we will have limited seating for the Boys and Girls Club, we will have our staff there, and I'll explain the staffing piece in a moment. And so parents would be able to bring their child there for the school day. You know, we understand that this model is taxing and is really difficult for working families, and we get it. And so we're trying to help assist with that while keeping the students learning and moving forward with their, with their instruction. So that speaks a bit about grades four through eight. In grades nine through 12, we're going to do a similar model, but at the high school. And we're going to use the large spaces that frankly, we won't be able to use for instruction, at least in the fall, because of the virus. So the gym, the library, the auditorium, and what we will do is section off, just like we'll do with the Boys and Girls Club, the large space into smaller spaces and be able to provide some additional tutoring, not to every student, there'll be limited seating again, but for those students who need the additional support, they'll be able to get it. And we will work to keep the students in a cohort, in a group, so they're not cross-mixing with other grades and other students the best we can to keep everybody safe, but also to help, again, keep the learning, keep the learning moving, but also, you know, give students who, you know, who need a place to go and need that sense of security until we can get our schools open full-time. And so, you know, some at home might be saying, "Well, then, if you can do that, why don't you just do it full-time?" Well, we can't. Unfortunately, we can't do it full-time for everybody, we don't have the space. The Boys and Girls Club can only hold so many students, and so we wouldn't be able to have everybody there in grades four through eight on the remote days. That wouldn't work. But we certainly can do it, you know, for those who need it, and, and try our best to meet that need while helping our students move forward. And how we're going to staff them, I'm sure some folks are wondering about that at home, again, through a partnership with our towns and in utilizing some of their CARES resources, which is a grant that all of our towns and school system received, they're going to help support 10 temporary, long-term subs that we can use to staff the Boys and Girls Club, we can use to staff, you know, these places at the high school. And so it certainly isn't going to be a perfect model, but it's, you know, it certainly is, it is a way to keep kids engaged, to keep them supervised, to keep them learning, and to help parents be able to go to work and breathe a little bit, and be able to focus on the work that they need to do to care for their families. So, you know, I, I wanted to share that piece out with everybody. And again, I know Ms. PG spoke a bit about the in-person learning for our special populations. And one of the pieces that needs to be highlighted here is students that are in the remote learning model. And so that's whether you are part of a hybrid, right? So when you're at home doing your two days of remote, or if you're at the Boys and Girls Club, or the high school and the gymnasium, or if you are full-time in a remote model, so you're not in a hybrid, you've decided to stay home and do remote learning, it is really important to underscore to our community that that is not, the work that's assigned is not optional, attendance will be taken, it will have a very tight structure to it. So we'll go through that in a moment, but I just wanted to capture that briefly because we're discussing this hybrid model right now. So we have one example here. Again, this is not the particular model I think that we're going to end up going with, but it is one that a lot of people are talking about throughout the Blackstone Valley. So I want to share it because my sense is our parents will hear about it. I know our teachers have, because some people commented, you know, "Why are we looking at this if we're looking at a different model anyhow?" But I think it's important to, because people are talking a lot about this 2-1-2, and I'm sure you may have heard that expression. This is what that model refers to. It refers to, in a hybrid model, you have a cohort A, a group of students on in-person learning, Monday and Tuesday, while cohort B is at home doing remote learning, Monday or Tuesday, or at the Boys and Girls Club. Everybody would be remote learning on Wednesday, and then cohort B would be an in-person learning Thursday, Friday, while cohort A is doing remote learning. You know, I think ultimately what we move forward with, with a hybrid, will look something like this, but I do know a lot of systems in the Blackstone Valley are going forward with this model. What we are trying to tease out is really capturing that third day of instruction every other week. So possibly having a model for hybrid that looks like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday for Group A in-person, and then Thursday, Friday for Group B, and then switching it the following week. The challenge with that, of course, is every other week, your child's schedule will flip, right? They'll pick up an extra day of instruction, which is great from a teaching and learning perspective, but when you're, when you're trying to coordinate childcare for your child, you know, fourth, fifth grade, or middle school, or high school for that matter, it does cause a snag in that, that level of consistency. So we still need to think through that, but I did think it was important to just share both, because those are the conversations that we're having at this point, so to bring a little bit of clarity to that. And then lastly, our preliminary thinking on remote. This is really critical that families hear. The remote model that we implement in our hybrid, or at any point in the year for that matter, if we have to shift to all remote because of the virus or something, is going to look very different than what the spring looked like. It is going to be very structured. Kids will be learning for a full school day. Teachers will be available and doing and delivering instruction routinely throughout the day. It's going to look very, very different. Attendance will be taken every day. Right now, our learning management system, so how we're going to continue moving forward with where we put all of our work for our students and how they access that work, will be our Google Classroom platform. All of our assignments will be graded, truly graded, in Aspen Parents. I know some of you might be thankful for that. You'll be able to log right in and see what's going on, and they'll have a grade, and you can get the feedback on the assignment with that. Our trimester report cards for elementary school and quarterly report cards and progress reports are not going to change. It's, it's going to be school. So I really want to make sure that folks understand, because it's going to feel different and look different, because it is going to be very different than what we did in the spring. And to our high school families and students, their student work, that those grades will count toward their GPA. We're not doing a credit, no credit thing. It's going, the grades are going to count. For our middle school families, I know some of you might be really happy to hear this, and some of you may not be very happy to hear this. The model we launched at the start of this at the middle school, where we actually had and we ran a bell schedule and kids met with the teachers in different periods and rotated through this schedule, this is going to look much more like that than what we had to shift to. There needs to be an accountability piece in for all of us in terms of making sure that the kids are learning what they need to learn. Let me pause here for a moment, Jane, because from here, we shift into health and safety. I don't know if we want to tackle this by segment, if the committee has any specific questions about the teaching and learning plans. about the teaching and learning plans before we move into health and safety, or if the committee would prefer.
Sure, no, yeah, let's do that, Jason. Let's see if people have some questions. I also want to do a little bit more on that remote piece and indicate that families will have that option initially to choose that. Even if the district chooses to go into a hybrid, a family can choose remote as their option.
Absolutely.
And then, I just, I know that Jason didn't really get into the guiding principles. You said you all know them, but I think I want to talk a little bit further because there really are some underlying principles as the committee's met to develop that. And they are exactly what Jason outlined, but safety first and our goal to mitigate risks. We will never avoid all risk. There is not any plan, when you walk out your door, that avoids all risk. So if you've left your house at all, you've had risk. And so, what we do is we attempt to mitigate that risk. And safety first was one underlying principle. We have been mission-focused. Fundamental principle in our planning is what is our mission? But we ask that you be flexible. The guidelines will change, the conditions will change. We keep getting things from the Department of Education that seem to change or add. And so, you hear us talking about 60 to 90 days because that's what we've been asked to plan out too. We may need to, you know, after 30 days, reevaluate this and move to a different phase. Or we need that nimbleness, that flexibility of everyone to be patient with this. So while you'll hear us say 60 days or 90 days, you know, it could be, it could be longer than that. It could be shorter than that. It could be a different plan altogether. But this is a new normal. People have to understand it. We have to have a reimagined way of teaching and learning and working. This is not anything anybody's done before. But it is a new normal. So, you know, carpets on the floor or whatever, you know, little couches are not away, but people have learned in different formats before. People will learn in different formats now. And we're asking for your patience, but we're also asking for your guidance. So you'll have an opportunity to respond. You'll have an opportunity. I know that people are writing in, and I think that's great. If you want to speak during public forum, we'll give you that opportunity. But we will have the Facebook Live. We will get to your questions. You can reach out to any school member. I know we have a lot more of this to get through, but I wanted to get that out there because questions are kind of coming in. And I'm answering them as best I can. But, so, do school committee members have any questions or concerns or comments they want to make at this point?
Jane, I have a question.
Yeah, Karen.
So, if my child chooses hybrid and whatever variation that ends up with, when they are on the remote cycle of that, do they have access to a teacher? Like, are they getting remote learning? Or is it more that they're going to be working on independent projects to bolster what's already been taught? And then, a second part of that question is, are those remote teachers the same that the people who chose remote are working with? If that makes sense?
Yeah, Karen, I really appreciate the question. And because it's a tricky one, right? And it's one that we keep processing. And so, in our conversations with the teachers today, we actually were having that exact same discussion. And we were looking at it from the teacher perspective in terms of, you know, how do we plan for two groups of kids? Like, how do we keep that learning going? And so, one of the parts of the conversation was framed around this idea of, you know, we develop our lessons for, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, for all kids, right, all students, so that you have this continuity of learning. So if you're in front of a teacher, say, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, Friday, you're remote, right? So maybe you're home or at the Boys and Girls Club, the work that you started the first part of the week, you're going to continue working on. And so, what we have to figure out is, you know, yes, we'll have tutors available to help the students with their learning if they choose, you know, if their family chooses the Boys and Girls Club or, you know, the kid, student chooses to go to high school or something. What we have to figure out is how do we provide access and support to students on their remote days? Because one of the things we want to be really careful of is that we don't want the, you know, freshman taking Algebra I to have one teacher for the first part of the week and then a second teacher when they're remote. Because when they go back to school on Monday, it's going to be a reset of that instruction if the teacher from the remote days is teaching a different way or a different method or, you know, teaching a different approach than their classroom teacher does. So we still have to figure that out at this point.
Can I interject something here which connects to this question and also to Jane's comments earlier regarding our flexibility? The district as a whole will absolutely need to be flexible, and we will need to be prepared at a moment's notice to pivot. And we are going to do that. But one of the things that I also would like to try to stress with families is this is a fluid situation for the district. However, we cannot have constant fluidity for individual families or children. So, we want to emphasize, I wanted to emphasize this because yes, there's choices, and yes, there's opportunities to change those choices to some extent. But in order for a system like this to run effectively and to be successful, students can't say that they're going to be coming to the hybrid model one week and then the next week decide they're going to go remote and then want to return to the hybrid model the next week and on Tuesday decide they're going to go, but they can't show up for their Monday program. So it's one of those things where we really do need accurate counts. We need, we need to be organized to a T in order to make this as successful as possible and understanding that there can't be a ton of flip-flopping in the midst of what it is that we're trying to accomplish in the programs. That will be really, really helpful for the district. So I just wanted to put that out there. We need to be fluid, we need to be flexible, but we also need to have some commitment to the decisions that get made.
Karen, did we, I mean, the best we could, we tried to answer that.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jane. Oh, I was going to say, well, the only other question, so, the full remote, like for parents or families that choose full remote, are they in a separate pod almost? Like, separate pool of teachers? Going along at their own steady rate? Okay, that was my, that's good. All right, thank you.
That part's almost easier for us to resolve.
Exactly.
How do we get the direct access to teachers on the remote day?
Right.
Those teachers are working with a different group of kids.
Exactly.
We can get them access to a teacher or to a paraprofessional or a substitute. I mean, there's not, there's no, that's not the question. The question is, how do we connect them to the right adult? Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
Jane, Tammy has her hand up.
Oh, go ahead, Tammy. I'm sorry, I'm also reading, I'm like, whoa, 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 whoa!
I wasn't sure if you were waiting for something else, Jane. So I have a bunch of questions. I'm just going to piggyback on Karen's first. For the full remote, not homeschooling, fully remote, run by the district, right? Homeschooling is a different entity.
Yep, yes.
Okay, so, fully remote. You're going to have teachers assigned to those students. Part of what we saw in the months that we did fully remote was conversations about, you know, parents are working 9 to 5 and can't help kids maybe during that time. Is there going to be, or have we talked about? I know there's discussions going on with teachers and other situations outside of this conversation that maybe perhaps we tape lessons so that maybe you're in a Google Meet, you're teaching in the moment to students, but recording those lessons so that if someone misses it for whatever reason, then they can go back and get that learning from a certified teacher later?
Yes, so, in the guidance that the Department of Education released specifically on remote learning, it clearly defines the need for both types of instruction. So that live and in-person instruction, but also for some of those, you know, and also, Tammy, it could be some of the pre-recorded. It may not even necessarily be a lesson that the teacher taught live to that group, and it might be something that they're going to record, have the kids watch first, and then attend the Google Hangout, right? Almost like a flipped classroom.
Classroom, sure.
Kind of work through. So, yeah, so the notion is it'd be both.
Okay, I just, I think the remote really needs that more live teaching, scheduled live teaching, consistent on a day-to-day basis in order to be successfully brought forth to kids and continue learning. You have to have that piece. I'm teaching now, so I do five half-hour live lessons with 15 minutes in between for independent work and to allow kids to get up and do what they need to do and give their eyes a break. But I think it's really a successful model to engage learning.
I definitely agree with that. That makes sense.
If, Jason, I want to reiterate to folks that are watching that when you send the survey out, you will also be sending this PowerPoint or Google Slides or whatever you've created this on and the recording of this meeting or this portion of this recording, correct?
I've asked Jesse to, who runs our video, to like, just lift this part of the school committee meeting so I can actually send this whole conversation with the PowerPoint.
Jason, for teachers, for the hybrid model, teachers will be in every day?
Yes.
Is that true or not true? Five days a week, teachers will be in the building? And what role they play, whether it's virtual or live with students in front of them, will depend on where we go from here?
And I'll tell you, the only reason that that wasn't the case in the spring was because the governor had issued a stay-at-home law. So providing that that doesn't happen, you know, and we're still moving along with our phase reopening the way that we are, we're all in. I mean, everybody will be in the classroom each day. Yep.
For the, I don't, does anybody else want to go in between? You may have the same questions as me, and I don't want to hog the thought process here.
Well, and I am getting a lot of bus questions, and I will remind people that we still have a lot of details that are coming up in terms of, that Matthew's, that's going to address in terms of cleaning and buses and those kinds of things. So, give us time, we knew this would take a while. All right, does anybody besides Tammy? And you guys, just so you know, because Jason's sharing his screen, I don't see everybody. So if you do have something you want to say, this might have to... Go ahead.
As far as the Remote Learning Center at the Boys and Girls Club, if it's going to be our teacher assistants or substitutes, is there going to be like a lead teacher there on hand or some sort of district supervision? That was my question.
Yeah, so, we're actually thinking right now, and it depends on the numbers, and it depends upon how many numbers, you know, how many students want to attend on a regular basis, what we need that staffing specifically to look like. But there will absolutely be our district staff and our instructional coaches partnering with those individuals to make sure that they have what they need from a teaching and learning place to help the students correctly. The other part that's really important about that, which I haven't mentioned yet, but we talk about meeting the behavioral health needs and social-emotional health needs is a lot of work that Ms. PG will talk about in a moment. But we are also working on a 90-day contract with family continuity to bring onboard two more clinicians. Through a, you know, private clinical agency to help our students when they come back to school. And so, my sense is, Sarah, on like the behavioral, social-emotional side, we'll be able to use some of the clinical staff to help out at our off-site place along with our instructional coaches, the permanent subs or building subs that we're going to hire that we're going to send there. And you'll hear a little bit more about a lead nurse that we'll need as we move forward and that will help address the safety concerns.
Thank you.
Jane, I have a question.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Okay, I really like this model, and I think it's great. My only concern is that on the off-days that you're doing the remote part, whether you're the Monday, Tuesday in-person, Thursday, Friday, or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, remote, I just want to make sure that it's robust and it's a good amount of time that the kids are learning. And I just want to make sure it's not, it's new learning, you know, moving the learning forward because I know that they're going to be teaching on Monday and Tuesday, but then, is the rest of the week going to be just a recap of, you know, the beginning? I think that's what I was hearing just a little while ago. And I just wanted to make sure that there is teacher FaceTime during those days. And I don't know how it's going to work because I know that there's another group of kids that are, you know, in front of the teachers. And I know it's a very complicated, the hybrid model is a very complicated situation all around. But I want to make sure that we're moving, consistently moving forward and, you know, just make sure that's into consideration, especially during those remote days. Because I know a lot of the times, we did change it up a little bit in the spring. And I think, you know, it would be good to really make sure it's robust and they're moving forward on those remote days.
Yeah, I think that's a really key point, Wendy. You know, what we don't want to have happen is, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, a chunk of learning happened and then it just stops. And it's basically just like busywork, right?
Exactly, exactly. And I really don't want to see that.
No, agreed. So, that's going to be an important, that's going to be an important part of our planning in terms of how we lay that out.
Okay, great. And we're going to talk about the safety part after, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll save that for after.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tammy, you got something else?
No one else has any questions?
I have another question too, but you might have the same one as me, Tammy.
Go ahead, Tammy.
You take it. Go ahead, you go.
Well, my question, my question's about specialists. Remote and the kind of special subjects. So, remote and in-person, we're still going to have access to them? All kids?
Yes, but I, oh, go ahead, Karen, I'm sorry.
Well, and I was going to say, right now, I know that specialists go from kindergarten to first to second to third to fourth and sometimes to the middle school, which leaves a whole level of contamination, which would probably fall in safety. So if you want to address that after, but are we doing something to minimize contact as they move?
Absolutely. So once we have the final plan adopted, right? We know the exact structure. We are going to need to look at where our specialists are located. Actually, we were just having this conversation with some teachers earlier in the week about that. The challenge in telling you exactly where everybody's going to be right now is we don't, you know, this is just a preliminary plan. But once the final plan is approved, then we can actually start assigning people to specific buildings because we really do need to mitigate that movement. And so, that's an important piece. The other part, though, that I really want to underscore here is last Friday, the Department of Education released their guidance on phys ed, visual arts, band, and theater, you know, and chorus. And as you can imagine, it's very unfortunate, the limitations now that we have on students' abilities to do those things, particularly with chorus and with, you know, any musicals that we might want to do, and with band because of the droplets and the proximity that people, you know, typically need to be in with one another. I had a conversation, as recently as today, as a matter of fact, with our director of marching band, Todd Schaefer, and we talked a bit about some different ideas that he and the music department are kind of thinking through, at least on the band side, the instrumental side of things. And along with Esther Cody, our union president, we're actually going to be scheduling a meeting with all the specialists meeting with all the specialists to talk a little bit about, you know, how can we do this different? Because I will say, one of the things I'm very proud of, some systems unfortunately did cut those, you know, positions, particularly in light of what we, you know, we're worried about being a significant budget challenge, we didn't. And, you know, so what we need to do is think of a way to keep the arcs really engaging and exciting for our kids, because the regulations we have in the department are really different than what the kids are used to. But we are going to make it work.
Again, a new normal.
Yep.
Thank you.
Tammy, was that you? I don't think so.
Okay. No. Okay. So, hybrid model. I personally think that, and I know, Jason, I think you said in your presentation that you're still toying, or the group is toying with this idea. I, if you're going to do a hybrid model of an A and B group, I don't think it should be a Monday, Tuesday for one group. It should be a Monday, Wednesday, or something spread a little bit more. So they're seeing, I mean, with a Monday, Tuesday, you're going Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday without potentially seeing your teacher or a teacher. So, I mean, I'm hoping if we do that model, I'm not a big fan of the so-called cleaning day. I think that we should be using all five days. I hope we can figure out how to do that. That makes it easy for parents to get coverage or childcare or whatever has to happen there. But I personally think that we're going to be cleaning throughout the day. We're going to be cleaning at the end of the day. Having a whole day of cleaning at the expense of potentially children's learning, I'm not sure I'm a fan of personally, but there's that. And I do definitely think if we do hybrid, that it shouldn't be Monday, Tuesday. It should be Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Fri-, you know, separate, separate the days there. I love that grades are going to count. I love that we're going to give, provide feedback and assessment. We lost that a little bit along the way at the end of last year. I think that is so important. The minute you tell a kid something is optional, I mean, that was the worst email as a parent I ever received from another district, that it was optional in the first, you know, two or three weeks of this. What do you do with that when you have an unmotivated kid? So I love the grading part. You know, the move of MES and making sort of satellite schools. I think that is, it's going to help with the safety at the end of the day. And I think that with the remote, if we do the hybrid model, I think it's going to help with that also, because teachers are going to be able to support teachers at that grade level, you know, figuring out the resources that they need and what help, what resources are good for remote learning. And I think that's going to benefit all kids. And this is probably for Jill. If we do a hybrid model, are students in specialized programs going to go every day?
So yes, if we are in a hybrid, like I said before, our, we are prioritizing. Department of Education made it very clear that we really need to make every effort to get our high priority, our most significant kids, which include that, our earliest learners, our preschool, as well as our students with more complex needs, or more of our substantially separate classrooms. So that is our goal, yes, to get our students, yes.
And speaking of our substantially separate classrooms for, and I always forget what you call it, Jill, and I apologize. I call it trade, you call it something else, but the goal is vocational skills going out into the community. What's that going to look like as of now?
Though actually, we have a special education return and recovery team, and that's something we actually have been talking about. I have my high school team chair on there. And some of the things that we're talking about is, number one, we have to make sure that we're allowed to go out, and it's safe to get our kids out into the community. If we are, it might start with more outside type of activities. In the interim, we're actually exploring some other things that we can bring in for programs for the classroom, whether it's online. And we're also, we also have an apartment in our high school as well as a foods lab, so the kids will continue to make use of those. When it comes to the vocational, it may not be, if it's not available, we're going to think of creative ways to make sure our kids can continue to move forward and gain those skills, because that's what their IP goals, and we still need to provide them that education. So we actually are investigating those. And as soon as we have the okay, if we can get out into the community, that's what we plan to do. But when we do go out, our groups and our numbers will be smaller, because we want to make sure our students are also safe on transportation and well-supported in environments on the outside. But like I said, they could start when the weather's nice, more of outside activities, you know what I mean, to start integrating the kids out there. Because remember, it's not just vocation. We talk about, you know, community safety. We talk about a lot of things in the community. So we're working on those ways right now, actually, to make sure we're able to move forward with our older students.
Okay. I think that is all for me. I love, no, I mean, I just, I think Wendy, Wendy's question was definitely something like, we can't stay stagnant, teach two days and call it a, call it a week. We can't do that. And so I love that. And, you know, I hope there's an option to record lessons. I know at the college level, professors are teaching to people in front of them. While it's being recorded, people at home are the other half of that class. I don't know if we could ever get that to work in public school.
Actually, Tammy, they're not being recorded. They're teaching live. There's a camera. So when I'm teaching, there will be a camera on me, and I will have students who are on the Zoom, and I will have students who are in the classroom. And that's the same way that my daughter's high school is doing it as well. They will have half the group in and half the group online, and then the next day, and the teacher's the same, and the work is the same, and...
I love that model. Jane, can I just jump in really quick, and then I'll let Jason finish, finish the safety part of it, because I'm looking forward to that. But I know there's a lot of hybrid models going around. I know there's different points of view on which hybrid model is the best. And I think everybody has a different lens on the hybrid, on which hybrid would be the best. Some say one week on, one week off. Some say Monday, Wednesday. Some say Monday, Tuesday. I'm in favor of the safest and the most deep, the way we can deep clean these schools is the most important, you know, safety first. And, you know, I know that you'll be, you're driving that force on, you know, making it a safe place for the kids to come. And, you know, I just wanted to make a point that, you know, you know, my personal opinion is AA, you know, Monday, Tuesday, but in less transition. But I think leaving it, you know, to whatever decision is made. But I have to, I just have to reiterate that there needs to be synchronous learning every single day, whether it's remote, whether it's, you know, whether you're there or not, there needs to be FaceTime with someone. It's just, it's just so important. It keeps them moving, you know, and it keeps the routine going. So I just wanted to say that.
I have one question too. Sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Tara.
Just can you elaborate more on what the optional tutoring covers?
Yeah, so we were trying to get a couple bites of that apple, so to speak, with this particular part of the plan. And so I was mentioning, for fourth through eighth grade, you know, we're looking at how do we, A, provide a safe place for kids to be during the day, so parents can go to work, right? We don't want parents to have to make that decision between, do I leave my child at home, you know, by him or herself, while I try to provide for my family? How do I kind of balance all of this? So, you know, the main goal was around safety. The second goal was around, obviously, the academic piece, and wanting to be able to provide, you know, a safe place where we have some, you know, long-term subs available, adults available to work with children, and to support them with whatever their projects are, whatever, you know, reading, you know, essay development, whatever it is that they need to do on their remote days. So they would bring their Chromebook, all of their work with them, and we would greet them first thing in the morning, right? So it'd run like a typical school day in terms of the time that they would be there. And then we'd also set up some enrichment activities for the students. Again, we'd do it safely, but we'd do it in a way that, you know, they could work on an art project and, you know, have an opportunity to, you know, kind of build that skill set, exercise that muscle a little bit too while they're there. We'll provide lunch, so we'll make sure that we have food provided, as we've been doing for the Boys and Girls Club. And we'll have some of our clinicians, our, you know, our two counselors that we're looking to bring onboard, check in over there. Our instructional coaches make sure that the adults have what they need, that are working with the students. We'll set up, if you're not familiar with the Boys and Girls Club space, it is, it's a great space. It's, it's big. I mean, there's a lot of room. So when I met with their executive director and director, who, they were just fantastic, Bruce and Sarah, you know, we talked about how we could divide, actually divide the space up, so we'd have small cohorts of students. And so for instance, Tara, if, you know, if you have a fifth grader, and that fifth grader has, you know, five or six kids from, you know, his or her class that all decide to sign up, we'd keep those kids together in a little cohort. So we wouldn't have this expansive where kids are all over the place. We'd keep the kids, you know, with their masks in a small space, all working together, so parents can have a peace of mind that they can go to work and not worry while their child's being fed, cared for, they're working with their academics, they have an adult that can help tutor them, and they'll have a little bit of an opportunity for enrichment.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I guess I just didn't realize, yes. Yeah, thank you. I didn't realize that that was what the Boys and Girls Club was, is optional tutoring. So thank you for explaining that.
Okay. Sorry if I wasn't more elaborate.
I might have just missed it. Thank you.
So, Jason, there are a couple of questions about this whole concept of K through three students who are in a very staid learning environment, if you will, a very kind of regimented, for those of you who went to school in my era, an older era way of learning. And so the questions are, how are sending elementary schoolchildren into that kind of sterile environment better than, you know, remote learning, keeping them at home? I have some personal answers to that, but I'm sure that you have some as well. But one of the ones that I believe the research says is children in front of teachers, personally in front of teachers, whether that teacher is six feet away, 12 feet away, 20 feet away, but in the same room live, is a benefit to the children, and the research will show that. But also, student interaction happens, six feet away, 10 feet away, 20 feet away, student interaction happens. I am a product of an elementary school system that was in rows, the desks were far apart, the students couldn't reach out to other students, and had a very robust learning and elementary school program. It is different. It is, again, a new normal. But I, I think families are going to have to make some decisions for what's best for their children and their family. You know, again, I have a child who says, put me in a mask, put me six feet apart, you know, put me in a hallway, but put me in school. That's my child. That may not be yours. So, but I don't know if you want to address that.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I'm actually really glad that that question was asked, because we talked about that today with our, with our teachers too, that issue came up. Because the notion of, you know, the classroom that our students left not being the one, you know, not being the classroom that they're going to come back to is the right notion. I mean, it is, right? So we obviously know that just by talking about the setup. And we'll, by the way, have some visuals for families, so they can actually see what the classroom setup will be. But from the perspective of the actual environment, you know, we were discussing the notion of, for our kindergarten, maybe in first grade students, you know, getting some different type of equipment for their actual desks. They make all kinds of really interesting things to help students in the classrooms, stay focused, get their wiggles out. So some students use kind of a, almost like a, like one of the big medicine balls you see at the gym that you kind of sit on. They use that so that they can kind of swivel around while they're in their, at their desk. Some students have these kind of textured rubber kind of balancing seats that they sit on, that also kind of plays with their balance, so they're, you know, able to kind of move. Something as simple as I use as an elementary school teacher, Velcro strips. If I had students that had a really hard time focusing, I put the Velcro strip under the desk, they can rub their finger on, and it was just that tactile piece that gave them a little bit of that touch that they needed. So there's a lot of creative ways. And so we are definitely committed to working with our kindergarten staff to make sure that they have what they need. Because I will say, I would rather take on that challenge of how do we get the environments to be as engaging as we can with the way it has to be set up, but have that direct instruction for five and six-year-olds on how to sound, you know, how to decode, sound out words, put sentences together, work on counting, math, you know, addition, subtraction, et cetera. So the physical environment, that stuff, we can tackle that. You know, there are also things that are called brain breaks, mindfulness, things that we can do. Kids can be right at their desks. They can get up, push your chair and stretch, you know, touch their toes. There's a lot of little tricks. And a lot of our teachers know these things. They're really good at those things. But I will say, it's going to force us to be real creative.
I just wanted to bring up, Jason, this might be a good point. When we're talking about these breaks, I also have the Return and Recovery SEL, the Social Emotional Team. And one of the things that we're looking to put in, as well as, you know, implementing some of the social-emotional aspects, because we feel very strongly that this should be at the forefront as we open school to get our kids comfortable and in a safe place in order to learn. But one of the things that our team is doing, and I'm great, I have some fantastic folks there, psychologists, school adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, are coming up with some activities in the form of a toolbox for our teachers, so they're able to implement those things. They have a place to go if they're not sure what to do. And it does include those things like brain breaks and mindfulness and, you know, what is it, sensational, you know, different types of activities in the classroom. So teachers kind of have a go-to to get kids, do you know what I mean, not just sitting, to have those, you know, small, but movement breaks or mindfulness moments, or how to, you know, just going to get those wiggles out. So that's something that we're, they're also working very hard at to help support our staff, to support our kids.
Jason, do we have, or how can a parent get any details from the Boys and Girls Club? I know they're in preliminary development as well, but in terms of reservation system cost, et cetera?
So there's no cost. I should have, there is no cost. Yeah. We are, we, as a school system, it's a service we're providing to our families. But there will be limited seating. So, you know, we are, as I mentioned earlier, we are applying for a grant, which we'll get, you know, every school system is going to receive an opportunity to apply for this grant, and essentially relief for local systems. And so we'll be using that grant, those grant dollars with the approval of the school committee, of course, to be able to provide this opportunity to our families. And again, I can't speak highly enough of the leadership of the Boys and Girls Club, their board, their executive director, the director of programs, they're just amazing. And, you know, when we slipped into this model in the spring, you know, they opened up for essential workers, and it's been a really great partnership with them through all of that. So we're going to continue that partnership. They were eager to find out how they could help us. But to our families listening, there's no cost for that. All we would need is for you to be able to get your child there and pick your child up. And so, I mean, that, the transportation piece, I know, might be somewhat of a challenge. But to be honest with you, even that, you know, Mr. Aronworth and I were talking about, how could we be creative around that? We don't know yet. It all depends on the transportation part, which we'll talk about in a minute. But yeah, there's no...
So I do think we should get to that and maybe have people, say, committee members save their questions to the end of the next phase. And, oh, somebody asked new calendar. We will be looking at the calendar when we approve the plan on the sixth of August. Hey, you're back.
All right. Ms. Aronworth?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. So I will walk us through some of our more operational aspects of the, what is to come. So first and foremost, everyone in the community should know that we are all going to be wearing masks. The expectation is that families will provide masks and that teachers will bring their own masks. That being said, there will be spares, because we're pretty confident that every one of the children will misplace their mask at some point in time, and same goes for all of the faculty as well. So we will have additional masks, but we do ask as best as possible for everyone to send their students in with masks and for teachers to bring their own. We will be incorporating mask breaks during the day while students are six feet apart. A good point about masks, this came up a number of times in our committees. What happens if students don't want to wear masks? If a child has a medical reason that they can't wear a mask... Um, if a child has a medical reason that they can't wear a mask, or if they have a disability that prevents them from wearing a mask appropriately, there will be exceptions made and proper spacing will be arranged for those students to be without masks. If, while we respect everyone's right to free speech and their, their choice, students that are choosing not to wear masks or are refusing to wear masks when they're asked to by staff, they will be asked to opt into the remote learning program. We cannot have anyone coming into the district that is supposed to be wearing a mask, not wearing a mask. That will have to be something that we're consistent with. Additionally, with respect to masks, uh, we will be providing a number of our teachers with, uh, transparent masks. They have a, a transparent window and those are for younger students learning, um, the, uh, learning literacy and for studying, um, phonemes. It also assists for, uh, students that have hearing impairments. So we're going to have those masks available. Physical distancing is an important piece of this entire plan. So please know, the Department of Ed put out a recommendation that, that chairs be a minimum of three feet apart. That's not acceptable to us. That's not acceptable for our staff or our kids. The district is as best as possible going to be trying to arrange the desks to be six feet apart. We say as best as possible. So we have assessed all of our classrooms for the capability to fit desks at six feet apart. On average, the, a classroom in our district fits about 16 desks spaced six feet apart. And that's six feet apart in every direction. So they would be to the right, to the left, front and behind a person not within six feet of them. What does as close as possible mean? If there's a situation where we need to have 17 desks in a classroom in order to keep a class together, that may shrink down to five feet, 10 inches, um, maybe five feet, nine inches. However, once we get past a certain point where we're, we're going past five feet or even possibly a larger distance than that for all of the desks, we'll be reconfiguring the classrooms and, and figuring out what we need to do to split that class up more effectively. But our goal is as close as possible to six feet. So with respect to that, um, we are going to make sure that we are keeping students apart physically with respect to their desks. We're also going to be looking at breaking students up into small groups and limiting their movement. So at the elementary level, what you'll see is predominantly students will be staying in the same room. Uh, specialists will more than likely, uh, be coming into classrooms so that students are not transitioning. As Dr. De Falco mentioned, there will be opportunities for classes to sign out, uh, outside spaces. We will have tents available at the schools. Um, so that will provide a, a break for, for students. And some specialists may opt to use those spaces as well, but predominantly students will remain as best as possible in their, in their classrooms. Um, at the middle and high school level, we will be trying to group students, as Dr. De Falco mentioned, into cohorts. So students that are remaining with their cohorts through the course of the day, even if they do have some transition, it will limit the amount of students that they're exposed to. Additionally, we are trying to entertain the use of block scheduling, which will potentially change how students are getting their length of classes. So potentially instead of having five classes every day, students may only get two classes one day. And then on the next day, another two classes or their, their three classes that they didn't get the other day, um, just to limit the amount of transitions. That is going to be a big focus. The schedules will potentially look different at each building level, uh, elementary, middle and high school because of the nature of the academics that are offered and how it is that students are scheduled based on their course needs. Uh, but please know that we are going to be potentially staggering transition times. We are potentially, when we talk about transportation, going to be staggering entry and dismissal times. We will be doing everything that we can to minimize, uh, large group interaction and keep kids as consistent as possible with cohorts and potentially in, in the same place all day as best as possible. As Dr. De Falco mentioned, we know this is going to be, um, a bit of a change for what we try to do typically. We love interaction and we want kids to be engaging with everyone else. But these special circumstances call for these special actions and we, our priority is the safety of all beings.
So, whoa, something funky just happened here. I lost my, oh.
Oh.
Um, Matt.
Yes. I can see you and see everyone else.
You can hear me or you can't hear me?
I can hear you, see you and see everyone else and still see Dr. De Falco slides. So.
Okay, good. Um, so question from some folks. Um.
Do we want to go through all of the operational piece or do we want to stop section by section and?
I don't necessarily want to stop section by section, but I want to get this in before I forget it because I've lost my chat somehow. Um, so, um, school supplies. So I assume teachers will have lists like they normally do, but supplies will not be shared between students, correct?
Yeah, correct. Supplies will not be shared between students. Um, cubbies will not be used at the elementary levels. Students will not be hanging up their jackets together. Uh, students will not be taking off their boots and putting them next to one another. Students will be at their desks. Uh, coats and apparel will be kept at students' desks. Uh, and each level will also be developing protocols for accessing their materials. So that's something that, uh, each school principal and leadership team will be discussing and putting out as well for families. Because if we have students all leaning over into the center of aisles, trying to access their backpacks at the same time, that's going to, that's going to compromise them maintaining the six feet of distance so that everyone can be safe. So again, supplies will not be shared. Parents will be given instructions on what supplies are appropriate for each level. And at each building level, potentially every grade level, there will be specific protocols that are shared with families as to uh, how students should be entering the classroom, how they should be putting their materials away, and how they should be accessing them as needed. Does that answer that question, Jane?
Keep going.
Great.
And I got my chat back.
Excellent. So, uh, again, following all of the, uh, the, um, Environmental Protection Agency recommendations, the CDC recommendations and the Department of Ed recommendations, we are going to be emphasizing hand washing. Hand washing is the most effective way to eliminate pathogens and, uh, combat this virus. So students will be encouraged to, uh, wash their hands as best as possible. When that's not available, they, we will have hand sanitizer, uh, accessible. We, uh, I will speak further at a new, another point about all of our P P E in general, but I can tell you that we have stocked up at least a 12 week supply of hand sanitizer. We have 160 gallons that have already been delivered. We have over 300 hand sanitizer dispensers that have been ordered. And there will be hand sanitizer dispensers and hand sanitizer in every classroom, office and space where students will be. So at, at almost every interval, students will have the opportunity to sanitize their hands to make sure that they are keeping clean and stopping the spread of this virus. Uh, let me go on. I said a little bit later about P P E. Since we're going to transition into transportation, I'll, I'll stick on a bit of the health and safety. Um, with respect to the P P E that I referenced before, we have ordered, as I mentioned, masks. We have ordered hand sanitizer. We have ordered dispensers. We have ordered floor markings for all individuals to be able to appropriately space themselves six feet apart from one another in hallways and on the stairwells. We've ordered signs that will indicate that students and, and, uh, adults in the building should be keeping appropriate social distancing, six feet apart. We have plexiglass barriers that have been ordered, uh, specifically for receptionists, for nurses' offices. We have, um, face shields that have been ordered for specific faculty members. Essentially any piece of protective, uh, protective wear that faculty or students or staff need, we have ordered already. And we may come across new things and new challenges. Again, we mention and emphasize flexibility. Something new may present itself and there may be a new piece of protective equipment that presents itself as being useful and we will purchase that as needed. We are going to make sure that we have everyone safe and protected as best as possible. To that point, um, we do not have a slide about it, but I wanted to discuss briefly our custodial cleaning and disinfecting action plan. I met today with our head custodians and, uh, Julie Wolford, the president of Unit C, uh, membership. And we had a big discussion about this plan. The plan is going to be posted. It'll be part of our return and recovery. Again, I mentioned, we don't have it here. There are three main components to the cleaning aspect of the plan. The first is our routine evening cleaning and disinfecting. And that piece of the plan states that after students have left the building and staff have left the building on a daily basis, night shift custodians will be cleaning and disinfecting every classroom, desk, chair, bathroom, hallway, and anywhere, office space, um, anywhere that students will be or adults will be in the building. Almost to the extent of they'll take the day off and do a deep clean. We will be cleaning and disinfecting the, the buildings on a daily basis. We have purchased misting machines for each building that will spray disinfectant through the classrooms and cover, uh, desks, chairs, all of the equipment in the, in the classrooms and hallways safely. And it is, yeah, they will be using an approved disinfectant that, uh, if you check the EPA's list N, our disinfectant is on there and it, the list N, for those of you at home, is a list that was put out with specific chemical ingredients that are known to combat SARS-CoV-2, that specific virus, which is the same, the same, uh, iteration of a COVID-19 type virus. So these, these chemicals have been shown to be effective. Uh, the one that we're using, um, has a very quick, uh, timeline for killing the virus. Uh, I believe it's just a matter of minutes. So what happens is at night, these misting machines are brought in and they are, they're spraying the desks, they're spraying the rooms and the mist is left on the desks to dry. So while it dries, it's sanitizing all of the surfaces that it's in contact with.
Uh, Matt, um, I'm getting a lot of bathroom questions. And will the kindergarten classrooms still have access to their bathrooms and then bathrooms in general?
Correct. They will. Uh, that was the first major component of the, the custodial plan. Another component is high touch, and I'll get to bathrooms because that's actually the third component.
Oh, sorry.
The second component is high touch point zones. Um, custodial staff during the day will be moving through the building regularly, um, disinfecting high touch point zones. Um, it actually, the, the plan states that there will be a minimum of three, uh, these touch point zones will be disinfected a minimum of three times a day, but more so regularly. As much as the custodians are able to disinfect these high touch point zones, they will be doing that. These, uh, these touch point zones include, they won't be limited to, there's a little bit bigger list in the, in the paperwork, but we're talking about indoor and ex, uh, inside and ex, exterior handles of doors, the crash bars on doors that are in the hallways, um, the push pads on doors that are swinging doors, water fountain, uh, levers, faucet controls, urinal and toilet flushing controls. Um, any of the cabinet handles that are used in office spaces for, uh, office staff. Essentially, oh, stairwells. Uh, another piece of equipment that we've ordered for the district are these electrostatic micro mist sprayers. So while the, the classrooms will have these larger misters that are, that we fill them with gallons of, uh, disinfectant so that custodians can go room by room, mist the tops and the bottoms of the desk and hit the floors and all other materials. These electrostatic misting, uh, devices are being used to target more specifically handles and railings. The electrostatic nature of these devices, when the mist is sprayed, it encapsulates the, the material that it touches. So when you think about, uh, a handle, you want to make sure that you're getting both sides of that handle sprayed. So once the, the mist is applied directly at the handle, it envelops the handle itself. Uh, that's the nature of these sprayers. So this will allow our custodians to move quickly through the building and rapidly disinfect multiple sources of, you know, touch points. So they're going to be going through the building, spraying handles, pushbars, water fountains, elevator buttons and a whole slew of other high touch point areas. Um, and these electrostatic misting machines will be extremely useful in doing this quickly. The, the goal is to have two of these machines in each of the buildings so that two day shift custodians will be moving through the building, doing this at all times. Um, the third component of the cleaning plan is daily, uh, more regular cleaning, uh, spaces. So it includes bathrooms that will be cleaned, uh, at a minimum of every two hours. They'll be disinfected regularly. It includes, uh, classrooms. Uh, as you'll see later, our intention is to have lunch be in the classrooms. So custodians will be moving through the building, emptying trash bins and replacing liners during the lunch period. And at a minimum, we'll be replacing trash, uh, at least twice a day. That's outlined in the, in the, um, action plan. And, oh, and isolation rooms. I was trying to think of the last one. I don't have that slide, so I'm just going from memory about this plan. Um, the isolation rooms will be, uh, able to be cleaned on call. Custodians at any point will get calls if there are students that have potentially exhibited signs of COVID-19. They will make sure that students are in the isolation room from the, connected to the nurses' suite. And then, uh, those rooms will be heavily disinfected as needed. Hopefully, we're not going to have the isolation you, rooms used that frequently, but we are prepared to do as necessary.
Um, Matt, talk, talk, before you go on to transportation, talk a tiny bit about ventilation and those, uh, machines you bought for the rooms that don't have windows.
Thank you very much. Actually, as part of, as part of the cleaning plan, HVAC is addressed. We are doing an analysis of all of our HVAC systems prior to the beginning of the school year. We are ensuring that all of the filters that are in our HVAC systems are of MERV 13 quality. Um, that's a, I, I don't have that plan in front of me. Essentially, the, the MERV rating of a filter, the higher the MERV rating, the finer the particle that it, that it will filter. Um, so a MERV 13 filter is capable of filtering spores and some virus, uh, materials. That's how fine the particulate is that the MERV 13 filters will clean out of the airflow. So it's known to, to, um, remove mold spores and really fine particles, potentially up to, uh, virus particles.
I have a quick question with that to piggyback. Can I just ask real quick?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so will they be opening windows to get the air moving but not using fans? Is that correct?
We have not discussed or put into a formal plan the use of fans. We will be opening windows in every room possible for the largest extent of time possible.
Okay.
It will, that will be, uh, that will be probably into the depths of winter. So, so we will, depending on the season, encourage families. So we will, depending on the season, encourage families regularly to have their students dress appropriately. That may also combat the issue of, of coats on chairs. If we need to keep the windows open, they may be keeping their coats on, quite frankly. I understand that this may sound a bit alarming. Accommodations will be made. There is heat in the building. That being said, we are going to be monitoring all of the circumstances and situations as we progress through this timeline of being in school and we'll be making changes to the recommendations. As winter months approach, we may have to close some of the windows and we may have some other recommendations or we may decide that it's better to keep the windows open and have kids dress more, you know, in, in their coats. But those will be conversations that occur as we're moving forward. Right now, we're focusing on those initial weeks of school. Windows will be open. All of our air handling systems and ventilation systems will be assessed. They will be maintained at a proper ratio for exhausting air from the rooms while fresh air is coming in through the windows. Jane mentioned and asked me to speak to the air purifiers that we have. For any space that has a lack of airflow, we are putting air purifiers into those classrooms. There are a few classrooms in the high school that are interior classrooms. We're not sure that those classrooms are going to be used for students. Again, some of these, some of these decisions will depend on the numbers that we get back from the surveys so that we can really look at the specifics. But there will be air purifiers available and if more are needed, we will purchase. The air purifiers are also being used in the nursing suite and in the isolation rooms. These air purifiers, they will create a negative pressure environment inside the isolation rooms and inside the nursing suites that will limit the amount of viral load that leaves those office spaces when the doors are. So basically, because we have those viral air filtration systems in the nurse's office, they're sucking in air and filtering the viral particulate out of the air so that when the doors are opened, the concentration of viral load is going to be lower inside the room than it is outside. And I'm sorry, the concentration is going to be lower and it's going to be maintained at a lower concentration so that we're basically going to be trying to move all of the viral particulate out, out of the nurse's office, out of the isolation room and filter it. Does that answer the question regarding the air purifiers, Jane?
Yes, it does. And, and as far as the fans, fans are not recommended. Anything that blows the air around is not recommended. But that will have to be in our final plan for final decision.
Yeah, that was my concern. I mean, I, I know I teach elementary and when they told me no fans, I almost had a heart attack because it's ninety five degrees and you have as many fans as you can cut, but in this particular situation, safety is the first priority. And when a virus runs horizontally, you really don't want a fan.
There you go.
So I just wanted to make sure that that was somewhere, you know, in, in, in our policy that we're, we've been creating. Thank you.
And I can, and I can also speak to the airflow through the rooms. While we won't be using fans, it is important again to make sure that we're getting that fresh air in. And our build, we actually had conversations with the building inspectors that are coming through our buildings to make sure that they are up to code. And one of the things they emphasized with our custodians is that they will be checking all of the exhausts for each of the rooms. So they literally will be coming up and where air is supposed to be leaving, they'll be taking tissue paper or toilet paper thickness material, they'll be holding it up and they'll be ensuring that it gets sucked up into the ventilation system for the exhaust. I've also given very specific directions to our custodial staff after today's meeting that all of the, all of the representatives from our ventilation HVAC systems are going to be coming into our buildings to ensure that all of the settings are appropriate for the right mixture of fresh air and circulating air. So we are really on top of that and we want to make sure that everyone, our families and our faculty know that that is a priority for us to make sure that, that air quality is as good as it can be.
And, and to somebody's point, and, and Matt, the isolation rooms are exactly that, isolation rooms. They're not part of the nurses rooms or part of the, they are separate.
Correct, they're separate rooms located adjacent to the nurses.
Adjacent, but not in the nurses.
They are not in the nurses suite. They are.
Closeable rooms.
They have doors that can be closed. And the nurse will then be able to enter the room, check on the students. Students will be tended to, but they will be clearly separated from the regular population or anyone that happens to be in the nurse's office.
And I just want to point out real quick that every, every building is going to have tents. So on those ninety five degree days that Wendy's talking about, that would probably be a good op, option as well.
That, that is, that is true. I'll move on to transportation. So again, Dr. DeFalco has mentioned that we'll be sending out a survey tomorrow. This survey is really important with respect to transportation in the district. We are trying to get an accurate assessment of those families that need transportation. And I will emphasize this. If families are able to transport their own students, that will be an excellent option. That's generally the safest way. You are bringing them. The buses do have cleaning protocols. I want to assure everyone that they will be as safe as they can be. However, as Jane mentioned earlier, all of these steps are to mitigate exposure to potential virus load. So with respect to our transportation, I've spoken to Neil Telstone, who oversees our transportation and we've, we've discussed cleansing procedures for the buses. They too will be disinfected on a regular basis. Students will be required to wear masks when they enter the buses. Students will be separated by six feet. That, that measure is approximately the distance. Students will be scattered in a zigzag pattern on the seats so that there, there is a seat between everyone in one aisle and they're sitting diagonally across from one another. I don't have a visual with me right now, but there are visuals that are connected to our plan. So if someone is in the first row in the aisle to the left, there won't be someone in the first row in the aisle to the right, they'll be in the second row. And then there won't be anyone in the second row in the aisle to the left, they'll be in the third row, so on and so forth. So you'll have a diagonal pattern of students. They'll be sit, they'll be sitting one to a seat unless they are siblings. That's the guidance that we've received from the state at this point. Even if there are siblings, we're still going to limit that seating to two siblings in one seat. So that we don't have anyone pushing over into the aisle and, and breaking that distance barrier from the other students across the aisle. So again, one person per seat. They'll be alternating seats and if there are siblings, two individuals can sit together. Everyone will be wearing a mask on the bus. Drivers will be wearing a mask on the bus. Windows will be open on the buses. And we will be figuring out how many trips each route needs to make. So that's why, again, we will be clearly limiting the space on the buses and that will lead us to have to make multiple trips with the buses. And that's, again, depending on the final numbers, we'll take that information and figure out which routes have to be run multiple times and how many times each route has to be run. And then we will figure out what the, you know, what the staggering is going to be. Each of the building principals is developing an entry and dismissal plan. This is going to include points of bus drop off and pickup and points of parent drop off and pickup. The plans will be different and will be specific to the buildings. I don't have that information with me now. But as you could imagine, each of the buildings have a different number of exits and entry points and their, their layout is different for where cars and/or buses can access the building. They will be developing these plans with the idea of maximizing the use of all of the points that they can so that we're having a very limited amount of students coming in at the same place or leaving through the same place. And that is potentially going to cut into some time. But as you will see in our plan, part of that is the Department of Education has lowered some restrictions on the time on learning to accommodate for these types of arrangements that need to be made. I wanted to speak to the transportation as it, as it applies to the changes that Dr. DeFalco referenced. It's not in the transportation slides, but one of the things that we are very aware will have an impact on students' decision of whether or not they support this idea of having grades K through one at MES and two through five at the complex is the factor of transportation. So Dr. DeFalco and I have already personally been on the buses and taken a trip through the towns and tried to determine with Neil Telstone the absolute farthest point that stops would be from each of the buildings in the opposite town.
On the school bus. I just want to make sure people know, we did it on the school bus intentionally, so we would get a sense of.
Yep, absolutely. We rode the school buses, checked the streets and to check the, the time it took for the actual buses to maneuver through the routes. And what we came across is that the far, the very farthest points that we, that we experienced in our trips, calculating draw, entry time and or exiting time from the bus, the, the largest distances or largest times that we experienced were currently. And again, we have not made any modifications to these, these routes. The largest times were between forty and forty three minutes. So for the furthest distance in Blackstone to get to, go through a bus route and get to Millville, it was approximately forty minutes. For the furthest distance from Millville to get to, to go through an entire bus route to get to Blackstone, it was approximately forty three minutes. Currently, our largest, and this was only two routes, I want to make this very clear. This is a very limited number of routes. Right now, our largest number, our largest routes take between thirty five and forty minutes for pickup and drop off. With this run, making these changes to the, to K through one being at MES and two through five being at the complex, currently, without adjusting any of these routes, our largest routes were between forty and forty three minutes. So adding somewhere between five and eight minutes to the entire duration of, of the bus ride, which is relatively insignificant when we're looking at maximizing the space for students to be learning on a regular basis. That being said, these are not permanent routes. So Dr. DeFalco and I have already had conversations about how we could potentially lessen the length of time for these routes as well. So our goal is to, even if we do have routes going out, they shouldn't be more than a maximum of thirty five to forty minutes. So that will still be in alignment with what our current largest routes are. And again, that would only be about one or two routes, possibly one route for each of the buildings.
Matt, can I just jump into that very quickly? So folks at home know, in particular, our Blackstone families, we went to the furthest point on the lake. And to that, to Millville Elementary School. That was one route. The other was the furthest point out on Rathbun Street, over near the park area. And then we went to the other side of town in Millville to the JFK AFM complex. It was, I think it was the upper corner of Chestnut. Not with the upper corner of Chestnut to the complex. So just to give everyone a sense of exactly, you know, where we were and in looking at the actual duration and how, you know, what it feels like on the bus. We wanted to ride the exact routes the kid, the kids would go.
Chest, it was Chestnut Alfonso Way. So it was that distance.
But just if anyone at home, you know, is wondering where exactly we were, it was, it was those neighborhoods to the school and back to get a sense.
And thank you for that, Jason. I apologize for not referencing the specific sites.
No, that's okay.
Back to the actual slides. So you can see parent drop off and pickup is going to be organized by building. Principals will be designing traffic patterns that maximize the use of the space that each building have. We are also encouraging students to walk or ride their bikes to school. Not only is this helpful for staying away from potential students that might be transmitting the virus, but it's also great exercise and it's really good to be outdoors and get some fresh air just in general. So we really want to encourage that physical activity and having students walk or bike ride. We are working, we're going to be looking into potentially setting up walking school buses, but that hasn't been finalized yet, so we haven't put those plans into a final slide presentation.
Matt, can I just respond to the bike rides? Can we, is it possible to have, this is Remka, just come up with a plan for bike riding? I know my kids bike ride a lot and this would be an opportunity for them to bike to school. However, with the different traffic flows that are going to continue, it might be problematic. But I think if there is a, if there is a route of some sort to go through the fields or something, if we're going to encourage bike riding and walking, we really need to have some type of plan for them just because there's no sidewalks on certain sides of the complex. And, and also, I guess you could, you could even say that for the middle school as well because that's quite a hike and there's no sidewalks there either. So just reviewing that safety procedure for those upper elements.
Matt, can I speak to that?
I was gonna, I was going to say that you are a hundred percent correct. Part of that, as part of that walking school bus process, we are going to be working with the resource officers, we're hoping to be working with the resource officers and identifying the safest routes to walk to school and to ride bikes to school and what those paths would be and what the traffic patterns would be. I apologize, Jason, if that's what you.
Oh, no, no, that's perfect. I was just going to weigh in on that and just let, and let folks at home know that we're actually going to be working with them to map out the routes as you were expressing.
Yeah, so it's an excellent point, Wendy, and we want to make sure that the students are safe in every respect of the term.
Yeah, and I wonder, they have had many grants that put out bike helmets. So just as like an advertisement of biking, you could even team up with the local police and see if they have that grant going. I know Millville did. Millville had car seats and helmets and, you know, it just might be something worthwhile, especially during the October and September month.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Thanks.
Thank you. Food service. So I have been working with Maureen Gonzalez, our food service director, and we have put together this initial proposal for a plan. I want to stress that the plan that we are put, that we are presenting is trying to, as best as possible, limit contact. That includes contact between students, contact between students and cafeteria workers, and contact with food materials and contact with money. So one of the first things that we are doing is we are making sure that all of our students have their ID cards with a barcode of their lunch code on there, which will be scannable. So as students are paying for meals or just registering for, for your reduced meals, all they will need to do is scan their barcode. Currently, we have not received a waiver for any type of universal feeding. If that moves forward and the federal government approves that waiver, which the state has put in, we may not even need to scan barcodes. I'm not sure what the extent will be with respect to the tracking of the meals. But we are making sure that in the event that these waivers don't go through, we have a scannable barcode, students won't be touching, excuse me, they won't be touching pin pads and they will be as low as possible exchanging money. We, again, will say if it is absolutely necessary for. Uh, we again will say if it is absolutely necessary for cafeteria workers to take cash from students, they will be able to do so. Um, but they will have gloves and we will be trying to limit that as best as possible and practice all safety precautions. Uh, food is going to be prepared, oh, I'll, I'm sorry. The, with respect to the overall process, students will be eating in their classrooms and as such, one of the things we're going to do is ask the public to make sure they're aware of foods that they're sending in. Certainly, we're asking that peanuts and peanut products not be sent in. Um, those are very clear uh foods that have life-threatening allergies associated with them. There will also be other allergies that may be present in specific classes and what we'll be doing is asking teachers to, you know, families will identify their individual student allergies that may present a problem and teachers in those homerooms or classes where students are eating will be able to share that information with the students that will be eating in that classroom and their families, so that they know not to bring those, those foods in. With respect to our full in-person uh process, grades K through five, students are going to take uh, the teachers are going to take student orders in the morning. Staff will escort the students to the cafeteria by homeroom to get a grab-and-go style meal. All of our meals will be prepackaged in either clamshells, containers or bags. Um, there won't be selecting items from a line, everything will be packaged. That's why it's important that the, the students know what they're going to be ordering in advance that morning, so that the cafeteria staff can make the appropriate meals and package them accordingly. Students will pick up their meals from the cafeteria and they will return to their classrooms where they will be six feet apart. While they're six feet apart, they can remove their masks, they can eat their meals, they can put their masks back on, they'll be disposing of their trash, they'll have hand sanitizer and cleaning materials available for them and that will be the general process. Custodians will come and remove the trash from the classrooms and they'll replace the liners in the trash cans and class will resume when it's supposed to naturally resume and that will be the lunch period. One of the, one of the hopes is that that transition to the cafeteria and back will provide the students some mobility since there won't be recess um during these, these lunch periods. Hopefully, they can get up, walk to the cafeteria, walk back, and that's a bit of exercise that they'll be getting during the day, again, in addition to some of those at, at their seat exercises that Dr. DeFalco mentioned. The only difference between the upper grade levels and the elementary grade levels for middle and high school students, they will have some possible à la carte items that are going to be made available. That might be a Snapple beverage or some specific packaged um product like cookies or, or something of that nature. If those are available, they will be behind the counter with the cafeteria workers and the cafeteria workers will distribute those items to the students so that they can put them in their package and move along. Students will not be taking things off of stands and they will not be touching anything at the cafeteria line. With respect to the hybrid model, those students, when they're physically present, who are physically present, will follow the same protocols as the in-person. Um, students that are attending a satellite learning center will have food delivered to them at the Boys and Girls Club or at the high school in an auditorium or in a gymnasium in their, in their smaller groups. Those meals will be prepackaged and they will be brought to those locations. Similarly, while students are in a remote learning pattern, if they're not at the satellite center, they will have a, a delivery location identified and we will be delivering meals on a daily basis. Uh, that differs slightly from the process that we're following now where we've prepared three or, you know, three meals, breakfast and lunch, and brought the package for a number of days. We are not going to be doing that. We're going to be making meals the day of. They'll be brought to the one delivery site, potentially somewhere uh around the middle school or uh possibly one site at each of the towns. That still hasn't been uh fully determined and that will be a pickup for those students that are remote during that day. Full remote.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Um, first of all, if I've missed people's questions, I apologize. I am moving as, as, as best I can and I think I've caught everybody. Um, but there have been uh questions about, um, well, lunch, um, it's been senior privilege, they can eat out in the courtyard. Um, has that been considered? And I, and I want to go to the recess. This saying of no recess is a state guideline, correct?
That is, that is a rec, that is a recommendation.
Correct, okay.
It is very difficult to keep students socially distanced appropriately if we're letting them out for quote-unquote recess.
Yeah.
A lot of Simon says.
It doesn't mean that we can't get the kids outside for like a mask break, stretch breaks, moving around. It's, I don't want parents to think that, you know, that kids will not, as a matter of fact, we're going to encourage those, you know, small groups to go out like this, you know, the mentioned will have tents that, you know, teachers can use. Uh, but, you know, there's no reason that children can't go outside and, and take a mask break and get some fresh air. It's just they won't be climbing all over the jungle gyms and the swing sets and all those other things, which.
Right. I- in theory, in theory, all of the classes are essentially encased in the classrooms, so while they're eating lunch, it's, they're, they're isolated. If we were to have recess, uh, like, like Dr. DeFalco was saying, individual classes will be taking mask breaks and having opportunities to get outside, but if we were to have a quote-unquote recess, all of those students and all of those classes would need to be outside at the same time and that would really present uh a situation where it becomes a little less easy to control, so to speak. Uh, definitely. Full remote, if we are in a situation where we do end up going back into a full remote uh learning environment, then we will be uh conducting our food services as we have since the spring. That will be, we will identify specific delivery areas and we will transport food to those delivery areas and, and give that to the students. This slide originally said for children aged zero to twenty-one, we removed that from this slide because, again, that universal waiver has not been approved at the federal level. However, I do want to make all families aware that if this is the case and that waiver is approved, then all children aged zero to twenty-one, whether they even live in this community or not, will be eligible to get food from our uh delivery sites. And that is the conclusion of our food services.
Jane, do you think we could um just take some questions for safety from the committee or are we going to keep going to the end and wait for, for?
This is the end of the.
Yeah, this, so this is the questions for Matt. Yep, these are, so now's your chance. Yep, go ahead, Wendy.
Okay, I have a few. Um, one of them, you, you talked about markers with a six, a six-foot distance. Is there going to be markers in the classrooms?
That was, that's a great question. There will be. So we don't have a, we don't have a specific system yet, but uh, we've discussed that with the custodial staff and we are going to be putting markers on the floor where desks and chairs are. Not sure if it'll be at like the front right leg of each piece of furniture, but there will be markers put down so that um custodians can quickly and effectively reposition furniture if they are to shift out of space, you know, um, across the six-foot distance. Similarly, students themselves can see the markers to self-maintain that distance.
Right, I was just, um, I just know being in a classroom, they push desks all day long and they can get super close without even realizing how close they are, so I wanted to make sure that that fell into the classroom as well. Um, the other question I had is, um, you've mentioned about, when you were talking about spraying, you know, using the spray to sanitize everything. You mentioned the water fountains. The water fountains are going to be closed, right? Or are we keeping those open?
So, uh, the water, there will be, uh, I said water fountains, so I apologize. Um, there will be in three of our four buildings, there will be water bottling stations.
Okay.
And those water bottling stations will have uh push-button controls on them so that no one will actually be coming into contact with the dispenser itself. Um, and again, those push buttons are among the high-touch frequency uh disinfecting that the custodians will be doing during the day. Those bottling stations have not been installed yet. They're going to be installed during the summer as part of the Safe Water Initiative grant that we were awarded. That was a thirty-three thousand dollar grant and it's covering eleven bottling stations that are going.
Awesome. That's great.
And the bottling stations have filtration systems in them as well.
There's a button, it's not, um, the ones we have in my school, you put the bottle under and it comes under. There's no touching anything, yeah, like Ultra.
To be honest, I am not a hundred percent sure which uh, which um piece of, we've gotten the.
Okay.
The distributor that we're working with, I haven't seen the specifics yet.
Yeah, I'm sure those kindergartners will find a way to touch those anyway, so as long as we're sanitizing those things.
Sanitizing every piece of it.
Okay, um, I think I have just one more question and then I have a comment. Um, throwing away of the masks and any of the PPE, is there, is there trash cans that are designated for specific um PPE uh removals?
Um, there will be. There will be specific trash cans for PPE, yes.
Okay.
I don't know if those will be, uh, we haven't decided whether or not those will be um in every classroom or if those will be in more uh central locations. So that's a consideration as to whether or not we want the, the disposed PPE in the classrooms. Um, so that's something that we're, we're still um trying to finalize.
Okay, I just think they need to be somewhere because I'm sure there's going to be a lot of kids that are going to be coming with disposable masks and a couple extra and you know, because the virus can stay in certain places, I just think it would be beneficial to have that somewhere. Um, that's, you know, for the other students.
I really like that idea. I just want to say, and maybe like a nice bright red trash can for that, so everyone knows what the difference is.
Biohazard.
Biohazard, yeah.
Biohazard trash.
So, so Jason and Matt, one of the things that keeps popping up is this concept of recess and I understood um that it was something that was discouraged, um, but someone just wrote in the latest guidelines on July twenty-seventh, said that recess is allowed without masks if six-foot distance is maintained, which we know that's hard to do and play equipment is open. Um, since this is a preliminary plan, would one of those working groups um have the ability to look at uh the July twenty-seventh guidelines and take another look at them?
You know, I just read those again. Uh, as a matter of fact, I've read them again this morning, so I might have missed it. We, we're happy to look at it again.
Me too. I, like, I'm like, I didn't, but it's, you know, I don't know. So yes, we, to the answer people, yes, we will. They're continuing to look at a lot of this.
Um, and I just have two, two just um state, um, comments that I'd like to make. Um, one is, um, I'm concerned about the amount that has to get done with, is there still one janitor at night in each building?
Uh, there are two janitors in the evening and there will be, um, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned. Um, I did have a conversation with the custodians today, uh, as I, as I referenced, the head custodians. Um, typically, there have been one day shift custodian in the, each of the buildings. Um, that is going to need to be changed. Um, the disinfecting that needs to happen during the course of the day can only happen if we add additional custodial staff to the buildings for the day shift and potentially for the evening shift. But Dr. DeFalco and I have discussed that those are some of the additional staffing positions that we will be posting for in addition to um the support staff for the remote learning um satellites centers.
Okay, because um, I, you know, when you look at the hierarchy, you know, you go safety, then you go academics and, you know, you just, eh, and safety is just, it's a must and the amount of spraying and cleaning and disinfecting on top of the work that they're doing now, I just, I just think it's important to have, you know, that one person that that is his sole job is to disinfect and clean and sanitize so that it's routine, you know who's doing it, um, and it's consistent. So, you know, that, that was a concern and the other concern I had was um the number of nurses that we have. Um, and the only reason I say that is um, I can only imagine the amount of kids that are going to be going to the nurse when they sneeze, when they cough, when they, I mean, you're going to be, the, the, the amount of students that are going to the nurses is going to be a concern. Um, and, and not to say they have anything, but just out of fear, um, which is a fair statement to say, so between the amount that is going into the nurse's station and then coming in and out of possibly that um isolation room, I worry that um, that there needs to be another body in the room um in, or, or with the nurse um to support the nurse, um, just because of the shared number of things that are going to be happening at that station. So I just wanted to um share those two things that I was concerned about.
Do you mind if I speak to the nursing piece, Matt, just quickly?
Yeah, please. After, I would like to speak to the custodial piece as well, though.
Sure, yeah, I think on the nursing front, we couldn't agree with you more. Um, you know, and just, you know, just the provisions uh and protocols that are put in place, if there's even a suspected case, you know, it's pretty significant in terms of the process we have to go through. Uh, so, you know, the, uh, the school committee will see after this, uh, there's still business to do after our, our discussion uh on reopening and part of that is looking at a temporary lead nurse and part of uh his or her role will be to, to assist and support uh in each of the different buildings. And so if there happens to be, you know, a large influx of something going on at, you know, Millville Elementary or the complex, that individual will be able to go and attend and help and support uh those nurses and help to coordinate services, communicate with families, the board of health, communicate with the leadership team. Um, so we are looking to do that, uh, utilizing the um, the grant that we had mentioned earlier. So we are looking to add that additional support, uh, not just for coordination, but for, for direct patient care.
Yeah, I'm thinking more, more along the lines of somebody in the weeds consistently, not, um, you know, just moving, but somebody consistently with, with the nurses that we have. Uh, just like I said, the share numbers i- is just, I, I don't want to, I don't want them to be burnt out. Um, a- and I, I speak this, I guess I speak the same for the teachers as well. I mean, um, I should, I, I would, should have said this earlier, but I want to make sure that we have something for the teachers as well to support them um, because I'm sure they're just as anxious as all those students that are going to be coming in and, you know, an anxious teacher makes an anxious student. Um, so if there's a check-in point or somebody that's checking on the social emotional means of the teachers as well, um, that would be really something to look at as well, just because, you know, they feel how we feel, so, as a teacher. So I just wanted to make a point that, you know, it, their health is just as important as the, you know, the kids in front of us. That's it.
Yeah, I, 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 I also couldn't agree more. Um, the point that I wanted to make regarding the custodial piece, you are spot-on with respect to our uh safety being number one. And the two things that we're looking at when we were, when we were trying to assess how to maintain this is the manpower and also the equipment. So that factors in also with respect to, to the people. So we used those misting machines and tested them in the classrooms and one of those machines can, can fully cover an entire classroom, the desks, the chairs, everything in there within a matter of about two minutes. So with, with those capabilities, that will allow the custodians to move quickly and similarly, the handheld electrostatic uh misting machines, it's a, it's a blast. They can cover, the, they're little handheld devices that actually cover up to twenty thousand square feet in each, in each um fill of their tank. And if you're thinking about just railings and handles and that surface area, twenty thousand square feet is pretty significant number of handles and railings in each uh canister. So you're not even stopping to refill that frequently. It's, they're on the move, they're disinfecting, they're making sure that all of these spaces are taken care of.
Mm-hmm.
And they will have.
Ja- Jason, can you speak to where we're getting the money to do all of this?
Yeah, so um, there are two things. There's actually two funding streams. The first, um, we're able to do some of the work uh through our CARES Act money, which was about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. We're able to free up uh some money in FY twenty-one to be able to do some of the um summer programming work and some of the things we've already put in place to help us be able to re, reopen. Uh, the other, the larger uh funding stream is coming through a COVID relief fund. Uh, that the governor released uh through the Department of Education and each school system. Has the opportunity to apply and it uh for and will be awarded. It's not a competitive grant. There's an amount allocated for every system. Uh, it's two hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. Uh, so for us, it's about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. There are some pretty tight provisions on that. Uh, in that the money needs to be spent by December twenty twenty and has to be used. Uh, for startup costs in order to safely get kids back in school. So a lot of the things that we're talking about. Um, from looking at, you know, cleaning air ducts or putting in additional programming and supports. Um, in our in our classrooms or Boys and Girls Club, a lot of that is coming from our three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, that startup grant to get school reopened. Uh, but again, a big uh thank you to both. Are the town of Blackstone and Millville because both communities have been very supportive. Um, about utilizing some of their towns CARES Act money. To help us fund uh some of the uh tutors that we'll have at the um Boys and Girls Club. So it really has been a community effort uh and money that's coming through funding streams through grants that we're going after.
Um, okay, and then the all of this spraying, and so maybe this is a question for Jill. All of this spraying and all of this cleaning and all of this disinfectant. And it we know that it's on the the EPA N policy, so it's it's not supposed to be detrimental and. It's been deemed safe, but what about kids with asthma? I don't know, Jill, if you can answer that or not.
I don't know if I, I mean, I think the thing is, it's not like we're, I mean, when they. It's being cleaned. I know some of the protocols say it should be cleaned when students aren't actually in the area. Um, and Matt, you would know more about the cleaning that we're using. It's not something that will continue to stay in the air for children to breathe in, correct?
Oh, yeah, correct. Not at all. And again, that's also why um. The the major disinfecting of the rooms will occur in the in the times when students and staff are not present in the building. The disinfectant of specific. Specific handles and railings and touch items are gonna be the ones that more predominantly are done through the course of the day. And that, again, the use of the electrostatic sprayer actually makes the mist adhere to the surface. That you're spraying, so it doesn't remain, it doesn't remain just drifting around in the air. It's not a cla- it's not a. Necessarily a cloud of droplets. It it's a fine mist and it just attaches to the surface and that disinfects it. So there should be very limited issues with uh students inhaling any type of disinfectant. And again, as you mentioned, these these disinfectants are not considered safe by the EPA. Not to sit and inhale, but to use in the buildings. So um there will be very little issue with that.
But Jane, I can follow up as well with the school nurses. Do you know what I mean? Whoever's also coming on board is our kind of like head nurse. It's a great question. Um, like I said, I don't believe there's a lot, like Matt said, a lot of things to inhale. But it's still something I can absolutely follow up on.
And and again, as our new motto really has become. If we have to pivot, we pivot. So we may find that a student has an allergy to something that we are using in in a classroom. And if that is the case, then we're gonna make sure that we quickly and efficiently. Change what it is that we're using to keep that student and the rest of the students safe. Similarly, if there's a student with asthma issues and a certain product can't be used. We will make sure that we find the right product and get it so that it can be.
Any other school committee members?
Tammy is raising her hand.
Oh, uh, go ahead. You just, you guys have to jump in, cause again, I only see four people.
Sorry, no, I was I was trying, as we were talking, I was trying to look up the. Uh, whatever that guidance on July twenty-seventh regarding recess was, so I lost track of where my meeting. Click was. Okay. Way back when, we talked about as a safety precaution, doing block scheduling at the high school or considering that. Are we also considering some professional development if we make that change, Jason? Because. Block scheduling is.
Yeah. Otherwise, you put a forty-five minute lesson and a ninety-minute block. I know.
Torture can come in the form of block scheduling if teachers are not trained to um mix it up there. So.
Yeah, it's not, it, you know, we shared it as a as a potential option, just one way to mitigate, you know, to mitigate the movement, but you're right. There's a lot that has to go into that.
Okay, it just, that was something, you definitely need some training there if they haven't um done it before.
Yeah.
Um, transitioning in staggering times, I heard Matt say. I just want to make sure that we're thinking about. It's it's very hard to do that at the high school level in that. You might transition half of the people, but they need to get to the classes that the other half are in. And then you then you're going to cross at the doorway versus if you have directionals in the hallway. So. Just something to consider when I heard the staggering leaving of classes at the high school level. Um, that was something we talked about a lot um i- in the task force in Cumberland.
Uh, to your point, I mean, Tammy, not to. We also, in our smaller groups, we identified that. Uh, different buildings have different limitations on how their transitions can occur. And it is possible, like the middle school has identified, they may develop one way always. Um, so so that's, you know, speaking to your point. Yeah, the staggering may be just a few minutes, you know, for certain groups of students to get in and then, you know, the class may start a little bit later while some students are working on. You know, a do now or something of that nature. But again, those those protocols are being worked out at the building level. To try to accommodate for all of their specific, um, you know, limitations.
Okay, and Jane, I think you answered a question regarding fans, cause that was up in the air, up in the air at some point. Um, they are not recommended. Is that true?
They're not. Yep.
Whew, okay. Um, faith, I heard something about face shield, the clear mask for the for certain um. Teachers working with specific students that that may be helpful. Is that in it, is that instead of a mask?
Well, that's in addition to a face mask. They would have clear shields. So that would be more uh predominantly for. Uh, preschool teachers or or, you know, uh, teachers working with students with more severe needs that may.
Okay, okay.
Contact with bodily fluids.
I I wanted to clarify that for the folks because. When I first heard that a week and a half ago in another conversation, I thought. It was for students who maybe have hearing loss or speech language issues where reading lips may be helpful. But but it is to protect eyes and face from liquids.
So it both, so we we've met, we mentioned um in the mask section. We are purchasing face masks that do have clear windows for those students that have hearing impairments. Or for younger students learning phonemes. Um, also, Jill and I had discussed. Although in general, a face mask is additional to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, a face shield. Will be in addition to a face mask, cause they certainly don't do the same thing. Um, there may be certain students that because of disabilities or medical issues can't wear a face mask. And then the face shield may be a potential alternative, not completely uh accomplishing the same, but being helpful in that nature.
But the face shield would protect the teacher more in the in some of those situations.
Well, the face masks, again, our face masks that we wear protect everyone else from us. Um, for the most part. And then uh for those students that with disabilities or medical conditions. Um, again, it's not, it's not the primary option, but it may, we may order them specifically for kids that can't wear masks, just to help with it.
Okay. We have, of course, in our specialized programs, we have students that at times require hand over hand assistance in the bathroom, so maintaining social, you know, that six feet. Um, is not possible. So there are additional protocols that are recommended um that we'll be putting in place. Having a face shield, gloves, like for example, a monitor on the bus will be wearing gloves at all times, cause they'll be, you know what I mean, clipping our some of our little ones in. Um, with our kids in the classroom, um, you know, we have to put um additional protocols in place, including those face shields gloves. You know, maybe an extra set of clo- making sure staff and, you know, some students have extra set of clothing, because again, we have students. That we assist in the classroom, but we also assist, um, you know, in the bathroom.
Right, and so I just wanna add, uh Jill, in our district, at our uh recent meeting, we talked about. Those um teachers in those specialized programs potential potentially wearing scrubs. So that they can take them off before they go home and have sort of a layer underneath. So just just as another thing, or maybe even. Um, we're thinking about getting like hospital downy type things for kids who need toileting help. Um, just to add a layer of protection between teacher for for teachers.
Yeah, and actually, it was funny, my preschool teachers and I just had that conversation and one of them said, is it okay if I wear scrubs to school? You know what I mean, as an extra layer? Absolutely. Um, I will tell you that the um, the uh disposable um. Aren't the best recommendation to have just on hand quickly, just because of the fact that we have some students who sometimes will be um. Disregulated and those really aren't safe during those times. So we have, we are having those discussions about. Extra smock or, you know, the extra set of clothing, cause accidents will happen. It could happen if a student gets sick in the classroom or. You know, if we're helping a kid in the bathroom. So we are having those conversations as well.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
Nurses also, Tammy, we actually just got a request from uh Karen Young, who's been trying to facilitate. Um, requests from all of the nurses in the district. She just asked, they're they're actually looking into using disposable ponchos. Um, so they put, they asked for an order of a tremendous amount of disposable ponchos that they can be. Be wearing when they're working with some of the kids.
I almost think like you buy a small amount of each and figure out what works best, so you don't end up with four hundred thousand ponchos and you realize. To Jill's point, that they cause a safety, a different safety issue.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's just a matter of how much supply you can get once you fi- make your choice, but. Uh, recess is a, I would like to see what the guideline is, and like I said, I was trying to look quickly as we were speaking about that.
Tammy, let me interrupt you for a minute. Tara found something, but Tara, I'm trying to do two things and I'm not finding what you tried to send. So. If you saw it, can you read it or refer to it?
Um, well, actually, Peter Olson actually sent the link in the chat on live stream, so I just copied it. And um I'll email it to the school committee so you guys can all look at it.
But it's a but it's a very large thing. Did you find the recess part?
Article. Um, I'll have it open.
An article from the state or an article from someone who has another opinion?
It's shared from Boston dot com. But I believe it said it's a guy, it's it's the guideline. I believe.
Cause I couldn't see anything dated.
We had to look more closely at it.
Okay.
It discussed whether. You need to have them wear masks at recess, and if they can keep six feet away from each other, you can go mask free. You can opt mask free, but if they're gonna be within three feet. They need to wear their masks, I believe.
Okay. I guess my, oh, sorry, Tara, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you're looking at something. If you have something to help clarify this.
I'm just, I'm scanning it quickly.
Okay, I'll give you a minute and I'll ask a different question while you do that, okay?
Alright.
No, I guess my my question is. Um, I I know that we have to follow the guidelines of D E S I in this area of recess. However, when I think about K through two. Uh, the proposal may be that they're at Millville Elementary, they're going to be split into, one class. Is going to be split into two groups.
Yes.
So potentially, that could be only ten kids.
Yes, it could be less, depending.
So if you if you do, uh, and and it will take work and it will take time scheduling such a thing for. You know, Christina and her folks over there. But potentially, we have a large enough area of field there. Take the, if if you if you don't wanna deal with the playground equipment and. Figuring out how to sanitize that. Um, at least allow, I mean, those ten kids. Uh, allow them individual jump or something. I I I can't imagine that they're gonna stay in a classroom for six hours a day. With no room for a little bit of play.
Sure.
So I hope we can figure something out there.
So in Paris, they gave every kid a hula hoop and then the kid, the hula hoop was assigned to the kid. And you couldn't get within one hula hoop to the next hula hoop.
Whatever it takes, Jane, I think we need to be creative in the area of getting these guys outside. At least being able to chat it up from with hula hoop distance. Um, and get some some uh sunlight.
Yeah. Tonight.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I think we just need to go back to what Jane said at the beginning about a new normal. We're going to have to put a greater emphasis on the social emotional piece. Just within the confines of safe spacing. Um, it's gonna be different, but we don't want, we we don't, we aren't gonna create an environment of, you know. Like a dystopian school experience. We're gonna be really emphasizing how to make this. A good experience, but a safe one. So just be mindful of that. I I know it can be overwhelming, like all of these restrictions, but we're gonna be looking for what we can do. So just be mindful of that.
Um, Jane, can I just piggyback and I I wanna mention something that I I think it kind of fits to a bit about what Sarah's talking about. Um, um, this notion of not having a dystopian society. I think it's. Listen, I actually.
I feel like the evil dictator having done the operational presentation.
Yeah, no, but I feel like this is a might be a good entry point, uh, particular for those who are listening, saying, yeah, this is great, there's a lot of plans, a lot of detail, we still have a bunch of things to tease out, there's a lot of questions to be answered. But what happens if? Right? So, um, you know, earlier, uh, Wendy mentioned. Um, you know, kids coming down to the nurse's office and a lot of colds and sniffles and coughs and. And she's right. I mean, on a on a good day, the nurse's office is really crowded, right? And so when we start thinking about. Um, you know, to Matt's point, well, when the weather gets colder and the heat kicks on and maybe we have to start closing some windows and, you know, what happens? And so. I just wanna share with folks that are that are still tuning in. We have nine uh very specific protocols in place for the, you know, what do we do if scenario uh pops up? For instance, what do we do if a student or staff tests positive for COVID nineteen? We have a protocol for that. That that was devised by our uh the CDC in um. And shared out through the Department of Education, a very specific protocol. What do we do if there is close contact of a student or staff that tested positive? So what do we do for the kids around those individuals? How do we handle if a kid is symptomatic on the bus? What do we do if a student is symptomatic at school? How do we manage if a staff is symptomatic at home or at school? Um, what do we do if there is a presence of multiple cases in a school or a district? How do we handle a presence of a significant number of new cases in a municipality? So one of our towns, right? Blackstone and Millville has an outbreak. What do we do? Uh, what do we do if there's a statewide regression and we see a big uptick in cases? So I, you know, I I wanna try to, I'm certainly not trying to worry folks, and actually, it's meant to be the opposite. We actually have very specific and targeted protocols. Uh, to Sarah's point, right? It's not gonna be a perfect scenario, and what if these things bubble up? And inevitably, they might. Um, and so how do we manage those? And so I I I certainly don't wanna take the time to read all of the protocols. But what you will see in our final released plan is we will have a fairly significant appendix. And all of the protocols for all of those scenarios, we will make sure they're attached so that families can read them. If you wanna read them in advance, they're on the Department of Ed's website. They were released on on July seventeenth. So as you know, we're mentioning, oh, this update was in the July twenty-seventh update. Uh, this was uh referenced in the July seventeenth update from the Department of Education. Uh, so, um, you know, if it's helpful, um, you know, you can check it out. If you wanna look at it in advance, you can just send me an email, I'll scan it and send it to you if you can't find it. Or send me the link, but it will be connected to our to our plans. So hopefully, that'll put a little bit of folks at ease to know that if one of these situations occurs. Uh, we have a medically devised protocol straight from the CDC on how to manage it. Thanks for that, Jane. I just wanted to make sure to get that in.
Thank you.
And Jane, can I just clarify for people listening, um, the guidelines. And Jane, can I just clarify for people listening, um, the guidelines that came out for, uh, specialized courses, I think they called it band and chorus and phys ed. Um, in that piece of guideline, it clearly says nothing can be shared. So it says in phys ed that you need to do things that are individual, um, that kind of stuff. No, any, nothing that has contact in it, which is interesting because they're allowing youth sports to happen on the outside of school, which doesn't make any sense why it's okay in one setting and not the other, but that's, we have to follow what Desi says. Um, and so I think along that lines, um, I started to think, could we have playground equipment only for that one group? But they don't want you to share anything. So that's I guess a no. So.
That's why individual hula hoops, Tammy.
Individual hula hoops.
With your name on those.
Get the purchase order going, Matt.
Great. All right. Additional pieces to keep in mind. Jason, is that you?
Yeah, well, uh, we can wrap this piece of it up. Um, so we just have to keep an eye on our current situation. We have to watch the data every day, uh, and keep a very close watch, uh, regionally and what's going on. Um, again, I mentioned the protocols, um, that, uh, you know, will be attached to our, uh, plan. And I can certainly send them to you if you need them in advance. Um, and we just have to be flexible. I know we've heard this, uh, we've heard this a bunch of times. Uh, we're all learning our way through this, um, and we've got to keep working together and keep a really flexible mindset. Um, and then lastly, um, there's a series of next steps. I certainly don't want to read them to you, but I'll just highlight a couple of important ones. Uh, we are going to have our survey going out tomorrow. There is a hard stop on that survey for August 5th. Um, we have to have that data together for the next school committee meeting, uh, which will be on August 6th. I will be making my final recommendation to the committee on our reopening plans. Um, we do in between that, we have a Facebook live session on August 3rd, which is Monday at 5:00 PM. Um, so we can keep this dialogue going and we would encourage any, any at all to attend. Um, and please ask the tough questions. We'll do our, we'll do our best to answer. And there are maybe things that we still don't know yet that we're still working out. But we certainly will do our best.
So one of the things people would, um, have brought here that has not been in any discussion that I have been in and I have been in my fair share is, has there been any consideration for half day kindergarten?
So we haven't.
My answer of no, because it's not where we want to take people learning wise for our mission, but.
Yeah, we haven't had any conversation about that, about half day K yet.
What are the numbers like for preschool?
Yep. So we're actually, I've met with our preschool team a couple of times because, because of some of the restrictions. We are looking to, um, revise our model a little bit. So we have, what we're doing is we're looking at the numbers right now, um, to see, number one, we may have to change our model. Are the, are role models, parents still interested in sending their students? Because we have to develop cohorts. So, you know, we have to make sure that if we have kiddos coming in in the morning, we don't want to, do you know what I mean? Have a totally different group come in and integrate. So we're actually, the preschool team is fabulous. They've actually come up with four models. Our next meeting, we're going to be talking about them to see what would work best. Um, and we're also, because there could be a possibility of some of our families in preschool with or without disabilities who may want to choose a remote model. We're looking at that and how can we integrate that into our current model? So once we get those set and have that discussion, we'll be reaching out personally to the, um, our special education students in our preschool as well as those, you know, role model families to see what their thoughts and ideas are about how we can best move forward. But it is very challenging in the preschool because we do have a lot of kids who come two days, just mornings, just afternoons. And we were able to combine kids for, you know, who are getting specialized instruction, but also inclusion. So we're working to find a model that we can kind of keep cohorts together. Um, and also, you know, in a preschool, you know, it is going to be difficult for our kiddos. They do need to move around a little more. So we also have to look at if our numbers are going to be appropriate. We may not be able to house, you know what I mean? The 15 per session. So we are looking at all of those.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so one of the elephants in the room questioned it come through, um, just at the end. And that was how does moving students K through one, uh, to Millville and students two through five to Blackstone, um, set with the regional agreement? Um, and I will tell you that, um, in developing this plan, the school committee has had some discussions about that. Um, particularly, um, Sarah and myself who, who have, and Tara, who have been on the regional agreement committee. Um, we understand that this is a risk. We understand that, um, making the decision to move students in a time of emergency, at a time where the schools, um, as they exist now, aren't capable of meeting the needs as we would need to, um, educate our students in this model, in this pandemic. Um, we are choosing to support this as one of the models, whether it's the model we go with on August 6th, whether it changes a little bit, again, all preliminary, but we are choosing to, uh, support that concept. Um, and use the portion of the agreement that talks about, you know, when there is time of emergency or time of the buildings not being suitable for, um, use, um, in the state of emergency. And we realize that that may impact how people feel about the regional agreement. We realize that, um, this may be a good test of one of the changes, looking to amend the agreement. Remember the amendments to the agreement are to bring it into code with current state law and, um, current operations within the district and to look at the education of our students in like, uh, groups. Um, K through, well, K through 12. Um, so it is, it is a risk. Um, but it is a direction, um, that we believe is the best for students, for learning, to meet our mission at this time in this situation. We will still continue the process of the original agreement. We still hope to go to both towns early in the fall. Um, we've asked both towns to set their special town hall meetings, um, and to move that process forward. Uh, but we understand that, um, people may have concerns about this. Um, and we all, everybody who's served on the committee, everybody who's looked at this. As, as Jason said in the very beginning, lots of people have given a lot of thought and a lot of effort and a lot of time. It won't be perfect. It, it, it would, it won't suit everyone's. It might not even suit anybody's needs. Parts of it might, parts of it might not, but, um, we believe these, this fluid plan, this nimble plan, um, of remote through all in person is what will serve this district. But we want to hear from people. We want people to get involved. But, but the regional agreement piece is something we knew we took a risk on, but believed it was best for the students in the district.
And that, that risk is to reduce the number of students in one building. It's to spread students out. This, this.
Have enough classrooms that we can make very small class sizes.
I, I think it's important for people to realize this use of, of moving, um, students to Millville or, you know, in this case to Millville, has nothing to do with our past thought that maybe, you know, having a sort of, uh, early elementary academy type setup. This is totally di- different. This is spreading kids out as much as possible. While hoping to enhance the learning, um, because you have some other benefits that might come. It, this isn't about trying to use Millville Elementary to its full, full capacity. It's hoping not to use any building to its full capacity in order to be able to spread people out, create those safe, hopefully safe pods versus any other reason right now. Safety is first at this point, when we're talking about moving anybody, um, you know, a sort of against what the current regional agreement says. It is spreading kids out, not utilizing every piece of space in any building. So.
And if I could just weigh in on that very, very briefly, just to give everybody a quick sense, Tammy, do exactly what you're talking about, spreading kids out. With the kindergarten and first grade, uh, entry K, so pre K to one at Millville, that would put their numbers about 300 students. At the complex with two and three, and then the four and five or fourth, fifth grade year, uh, part-time, right? Like not part-time, but like the hybrid model, that would put their numbers at about 325. So it just, it, it just starts to balance it out for, for next year because of the four and five being in a hybrid and having only half the kids in at the same time. So I think Tammy, just to really solidify what you said. It brings both schools, it brings neither school to full capacity. Um, and it puts a sense of equity in terms of numbers too, and it just gives the space. I just wanted to underscore that Tammy with actual numbers. You're making, you made a good point.
Yeah. All right. Anyone on the committee have any other further comments about the opening plans? I appreciate the people, um, at home who have, uh, expressed questions. Um, certainly you can reach any of the committee members. Our emails are on the website. Mine is Jane Reggio, my full name, all of ours is our full name, at B M R S D dot net. We're happy to continue to answer your questions, uh, to reach out. Many of us serve on some of these committees. Um, and this again, we'll continue to flex and flush and, and, um, meld as we continue, as we hear from you and your surveys from the live, uh, Facebook and any other ways that you reach out to us. And I'm going to ask that Dr. DeFalcone, move on to the next topic.
Sure. Um, so uh, just a couple of other items. Uh, tonight, uh, we referenced a concept of having addition, a, some additional support in our nursing department. Um, and so what was in your packet was, uh, a request for a approval for a job description. Um, that we are referring to as a district lead nurse. It's a temporary position. You'll see on the job description that we put school year 2021. And then a, a piece of language that says while in-person school is in session. I think that's important to note. Um, this is to help with the coordination of all of those protocols to assist, um, probably not, uh, to, to the, to the depth that Wendy mentioned every day in every office, uh, in terms of getting in the weeds. And I appreciate her framing of that. Uh, but it would have, it would provide extra set of hands on deck that could certainly move around to help out with some of those issues. But it definitely doesn't address all of them that Wendy mentioned. Um, but would also be able to work with the local boards of health, uh, in terms of monitoring cases, keeping up with any of the latest safety protocols, making sure that we're implementing our protocols correctly, uh, from a health perspective. So again, um, I'm looking for approval from the committee, uh, for a temporary position, uh, to do the responsibilities listed here, um, and, um, will be funded from the, um, the, the COVID money that's being released, uh, from the Department of Education.
I'll make that motion.
And second?
Second.
Okay. So who actually made it? Tammy? Who made the motion?
Wendy and.
Wendy. Okay. So it was moved by Wendy and seconded by Jack to approve, uh, the, uh, position description for a temporary lead nurse. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, moving on.
Um, thank you so much for that. Uh, the second piece is, uh, the temporary long-term subs, uh, that will need to provide partner teachers. Um, and, uh, you know, we know this is in like an anticipatory piece because we, uh, the committee hasn't voted the model yet. So I, I do want to say that right up front. Uh, but our thinking was if we could get an approval on this and post them as anticipated, um, that would be helpful because it just would give us a, you know, a, a week jump, uh, not W E A K, W E E K. A, a jump in terms of the timeline and give us an extra week, uh, to get, to get these posted. And again, these are for, uh, that partner teacher in the classroom to provide the additional support in our, uh, first, second, and third grade classrooms, uh, should that be the model we go with. Um, but at least we could get ahead of it and get the positions posted. And that is also being funded through, uh, the COVID, uh, relief money from the Department of Ed. So none of this is touching our local budget. I just would like the committee, that's a big, it's 15 positions. Uh, so I just want to make sure that, um, you know, the, the committee is approving of that because it's a, that's a big lift.
Somebody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Aaron, second? Yep. Was that, who was that? Tammy. Um, so we have a motion to, um, support hiring of temporary long-term substitute teachers. Is there any discussion? So there was a question that came about, about, um, licenses.
Question.
Okay. Yep. About licenses for these teachers. And Jason, do you want to talk about the state relaxing its licensure?
Yes. Yeah. So, uh, the Department of Education, um, is actually, uh, the board of education specifically is going to be, uh, taking some action, uh, soon, uh, I think at their next meeting, uh, to look at, um, relaxing the licensure requirements across the board, to be frank. Uh, I, I, I do not pretend for a minute to be any more creative or innovative than any other superintendent. And I'm guessing that many will be asking their, their school committees to do the same thing. Um, in terms of trying to get additional, um, you know, kind of, um, hands on the deck, so to speak, uh, to help out. So, um, what, what is in place now is that, uh, you can teach in Massachusetts for 90 days without a license. Um, and I'm, you know, not sure if people are aware of that or not. Um, but that is the provision. And the commissioner is looking to, uh, move that to 180 days. Uh, I think the unique thing for us, these individuals aren't, you know, they are not classroom teachers. They will never, you know, take the place of a second grade teacher. They're meant to just be, you know, to be able to assist. Um, and like I had said, keep kids on task, uh, help to support the classroom teacher, um, and supervision of the students that they're not working with at that particular moment. Um, so just so folks are understanding on the licensure piece, it wouldn't require that because they wouldn't be a licensed second grade teacher. We don't, we don't need them to be, uh, for this particular position.
Okay. Um, Tammy, you had a question?
I have, um, yes. I lost track of my question. Uh, come back to me. I'll think about it. Sorry.
Anybody else? I think it's only you.
Um, I just forgot. I, I, I got nothing. Oh, I know what I was going to say. If, if we're dependent on the cares, uh, money that's coming in, um, with respect to this particular, um, pandemic. Is that guaranteed money, Jason? Is that, because I always worry about this, the government saying they're going to give us something and then they don't. Can that, can this be contingent on receipt of that? Or at least like some, I don't want to hire 15 people and then realize that money is not coming in and then we're saying thanks, but no thanks. And, and it blows up our whole model.
Absolutely. So, um, the money that we are using, again, it's a $225 per pupil. For those that are listening in, have probably heard it framed that way. Uh, the governor has released it. So, uh, the grant is due to the Department of Ed, August 31st. Um, and we actually received a, a notification of what our allocation will be. Uh, which is I think Matt, is 382,000 and something. I don't have the exact number, but I think it was 382. So, um, I'm not, yeah, I mean, I, you certainly could, you know, I'm comfortable with whatever language the committee is comfortable with. Um, and, you know, we, we are going to hire these individuals as a per diem, you know, so they work, you know, they get paid for the day they work. Um, so you, but I'm, you know, I'm not concerned about the resources not coming in. It's already money that's available and we just have to submit the grant.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of supporting, um, hiring long-term substitute teachers, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
And Matt, do you just want to quickly wrap up with just a very brief snapshot on FY21? You're on mute, Matt.
I do it every time. I apologize. So just a couple of points on our FY21 budget. We have been monitoring our, our title receipts and our grants, and actually that's looking pretty good. We've actually are getting word back that we are receiving in a, in a couple of areas some more money than we actually budgeted for. So that's, that's actually promising. The other promising thing that we just recently heard is legislation has said that they intend to level fund Chapter 70 for the first quarter of the year and also include some additional funds for inflation. That being said, the specifics for what each district and municipality will receive are supposed to be coming out very shortly. We don't have that information just yet, but hopefully we'll have that very soon. And that's a good thing, we're hoping. Again, there's no guarantee on what the second, third, or fourth quarter will hold, but they are saying that they're level funding and adding inflation to the first quarter of the year, which is promising. That's, that's the, that's the information I have right now.
Thank you, Matt. All right. School, school, school committee forum, I'm gonna start with Tammy because I'm gonna ask you to talk about policy and what we're doing there. You're on mute, Tammy.
Sorry. In my mind, I was just laughing at Matt, but then I did the same thing. Sorry, Matt.
No problem.
Policy Subcommittee met earlier today, seems like a million years ago, in order to talk about updating our sexual harassment slash Title IX policy. This recommendation for a change came from Dr. Laporte, who is our current Title IX person. And the policy as presented to us is, has been vetted through our, the school's attorney. Is it the school's attorney, Jason? Matt?
Yes.
The, the, the one that Jill uses.
The one that Jill uses. So it's been vetted through the attorney to ensure that we are in compliance with laws and regulations and that kind of thing. And so this policy or the new guidelines in this area require train, people to be trained in order to take reports, and that will be done in accordance with the guidelines that were outlined in there. So we recommend that this policy be amended. Do I have to read the whole thing, Jane?
Are we gonna do it today, Tammy, or we're gonna do it on the 6th? We're gonna do it on the 6th?
We can do it on the 6th. So this will be available for review on the website. Is that what we talked about? Okay, because I didn't want to read this at 9:34 at night.
Correct.
So that will be up for review.
For the next meeting, but it'll also be up for review.
And if anybody in the public has any concerns or whatnot, they can reach out to either myself or Jane, and then we can vet it out through the rest of the committee. The other policy that we discussed was what we're calling the athletic and athletics enrollment policy. We talked about this at a previous meeting. If an athletic team cannot be fielded with the appropriate number of athletes as determined by the MIAA, as of the last day of tryouts, the team will be converted to a practice team and will not be formally involved in the regular, regular competitive season. The proposal that we have is for the practice team members would only be responsible to pay half of the athletic fee for that designated sport. The idea here is that we will still have to pay the coach in order to hold those practices. And so, but we also don't expect someone to pay a full sports fee if there's not a competition in games. The expectation will be that the practices will be held as planned for the original season. So if the original sport was to, to practice five days a week, then the practice team would also practice five days a week. So that is what the proposal is there. Any questions, concerns?
So did you want to do that one tonight?
I think we did want to do this one because we talked about this one previously, and our concern, although we, we're not sure where, we do not know where fall sports are currently. They're still, that, that is up in the air. However, we wanted to be able to get this in place prior to tryout, so there are no surprises and that there's some transparency. Parents are hearing it, and we know the expectation going in.
Okay. Is there, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the sports?
I will make.
Okay, moved by Erin and seconded by Tara. Tammy, could you read it again?
Sure. If an athletic, if an athletic team cannot be fielded with the appropriate number of athletes as determined by the MIAA as of the last day of tryouts, the team will be converted to a practice team and will not formally be involved in the regular competitive season. The practice team members will be responsible to pay only half of the athletic fee designated for said sport. Expectation is that practices will be held as planned for the original season.
Okay. Is there any questions? So in essence, if there's not enough people to spar, to, to sport a team or a team to be competitive, you know, to, to have the numbers to play on the field or, or court or whatever sport they're playing, then those students would have the opportunity to be part of a practice squad. They would not pay a full user fee, just half the user fee. They'd practice on the regular schedule of what they would have practiced had they been a full team and would have the coach guiding that negotiated through a guideline. So, anybody have any questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the policy as read, passes. And we will have a lot more policies at our August 6th meeting, most of them based around COVID-19 amendments and regulations.
And, and I just want to point out, Jane, that one of, I mean, obviously all of that, the other policies will be COVID-related. And one of the main policies that we, actually, we have a list of about 42 policies that the state MASC has suggested we look at, but the main one that stands out, I think, for parents is the attendance policy. Obviously, we need to really look at that and, and follow the guidelines from the state in that area. So I, I just wanted to stress that for parents who are like, well, you're asking us to do X, Y, and Z, but you have this, this attendance policy, you know, in place. So obviously, we need to look at that before we get back.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything they would like to share from a school committee forum perspective? I would like to share that I did my best to answer questions as they came in from the group chat. Please ignore my misspellings. I was typing very quickly, and you can't backspace. If you try to go back and fill something in, it takes away what you were typing. So this was something we don't normally do in a school committee meeting and had no requirement to do. This is our meeting, not a meeting of the people who are listening in. You have that opportunity at the Facebook Live. So if you feel like your question didn't get answered or didn't get enough detail, I would encourage you to reach out to any one of us, as I said earlier. But I will open it up to public forum if somebody would like to call in and have three minutes. But I will ask that it not be on the review of the school opening plans. People have asked a lot of questions about that. You'll have an opportunity again in Facebook Live. We will have a public forum at our August 6th. We will have it at the beginning of the meeting so that you can express your opinions before the school committee has its discussion instead of the end of the meeting, like we have tonight. But if somebody has another topic that they would like to raise, you may call in and let Jesse know.
So Jane, just while we're waiting to see if anyone does call in, I think in the most recent comments, people are asking who is answering the questions because it's coming up as Town of Millville. So I think it's important that they know that that was you, the chair of the school committee.
That was, yep.
And I, maybe you could-
So, so Jesse, Jesse sent questions to me. I responded to the person and, and Jesse just, I assume forwarded my response. So it's looking like it's coming from Town of Millville, probably because it was coming from Jesse. But they were, they were my responses.
So would you be able to put your email in chat? It was specifically asked for.
I, I did put my email in there. But it's jainregio@bmrsd.net. I don't know how to do that, Jesse, but you can put that in there, Jesse. Jesse, is anybody trying to call in? I will tell all of our members that Blackstone has changed its next Board of Selectmen meeting. It will be on August 11th. That will be the time at which we, the Blackstone members of our school committee and the members of the Blackstone Board of Selectmen will select the two new representatives to serve on the school committee for the next year. Reminder, if anyone has interest in that, you need to send a letter to Robert Dubois, the chair of the Blackstone Board of Selectmen, and express your interest. I think he is inviting those people who have expressed interest to come to that meeting on the 11th and speak, and our Blackstone members will be there as well to vote on those new members. I'm sorry, what?
Sorry, what time is that?
I, I am gonna assume 11, that's 11, huh? Really? I'm going to assume seven, it might be 7:30. I'm not sure. I, I guess you'd have to check. A posting came, but I have like four screens open right now, and I think I might lose something if I try to go to that one. So I can let you know for sure, but you can also check with the Blackstone. And I will say, I have gotten some questions and asked why it was so long of a process, and that's simply because those were the dates that, that things fell into. In other words, the person who resigned, who had been elected and resigned, didn't do so until our last, our meeting, I think on the 25th, or whatever that was. And then by the time that person resigned and we had a meeting to, to designate that we had to write our letter to Blackstone, then Blackstone only had its one meeting in July, and they addressed it then and, and asked for people with interest, and then their next meeting was not till now August 11th. So it's not like somebody was trying to make Wendy stay on forever, although we would love that, but it really was the way that the dates, that the dates fell, so.
Jane, is, where do people have a phone number to call?
To call who?
To call in to us, or public forum?
It should, is it, I don't know. I, I don't, I, I, I don't know. I thought it was listed on the, is it only through typing questions, Jesse? Oh, so the, the chat is our public forum, sorry. So our public forum was going on all along. So there is no, no call to call in. Because, because of Zoom bombing, this is our protection. So, so the chat is our, our public forum, so we've been having it all along. So we won't do that anymore. I will say that our next meeting is scheduled for August 6th. That is a live meeting of the school committee. We will meet in the where do we meet? The middle school? Oh my God. Hartnett Middle School at 6:00 PM. We will be socially distanced, wearing masks. At this time, we don't have guidelines set for an audience. We're gonna have to develop those guidelines, and we will get them out. It may be that we, but we will also be streamed for some of our members who might be uncomfortable meeting in person, just like we're trying to do with the schools. Those will be our remote members. But we are going to meet in a, in a live meeting on August 6th at 6:00 PM, and we will have details on how the community can join us. And again, we'll have public forum in some form at the beginning of that meeting.
Could, could we do it in the, could we do it in the cafeteria instead, or would that allow us to social distance folks? I'm just throwing it out there.
Jesse, can we do that?
I don't know if it's allowed even under the new COVID rules, so I, I just was wondering if we used a bigger space, if that might be helpful. Because I know there was a lot of discussion on the last Board of Selectmen meeting.
According to Jesse, we can hold it there, or we can hold it wherever. So maybe we will look at socially distanced chairs in the cafeteria, but we still probably would have a limit. Not that I'm expecting thousands. But we still have to talk about guidelines for people who would want to come to the meeting, so. We will post, once we have those, we will post those, but we as committee members will be there having our meeting. All right. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to move to executive session, not to return to the meeting in, in the end.
So moved.
Moved by Tammy, seconded by Tara. Sarah?
Yes.
I vote yes. Tara?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
I thank everyone for listening and adding their comments and Jesse, if you can make Jason the co-host, we'll say goodnight.